Good morning, and welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for April 5th, 2011. Roberta, can you please call the roll?
Supervisor Bennett. Supervisor Zaragosa.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Foy.
Here.
Supervisor Parks.
Here. And at this point in time, I'm going to come on down to the podium there and swear in our new CEO, Mike Powers. Mr. Powers, would you please raise your right hand and follow after me. I state your name.
I, Mike Powers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation.
That I will take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
I know the Board of Supervisors made a good choice in selecting you. I think this is the beginning of a new era for the county, and I would invite you to give us some comments.
All right, thank you very much.
Would you like to say something?
Look at that, all those years of college paying off. Well, thank you, and good morning. It's a great privilege to be here, sitting in this seat, and I just want to start out with thanking the board for your confidence in me, and just to assure you that I will work very hard to justify your confidence in me. And this is a real, as I say, a real privilege. I want to thank just a couple people who are here. My family is here, of course, my wife Erin, and Charlie, our vocal stylists for the day, and my brother Tom is here, also our dear friends and then also part of our family, whether you like it or not. Two Nicole Winn, and their daughters Abby and Livy. And I also just want to thank my healthcare agency family for all your supports that you've given me over the years. And my new family in the CEO's office, and to thank you for the warm welcome that I received there, and I really look forward to joining the larger county family here. For those of you who haven't worked with me before, it's not that bad. And for those of you who have, don't tell the others. I do have just some goals, it's a PowerPoint, but it's only one slide, so don't be alarmed. It's only, see, that's it, that's right. So I think these are hopefully remarkably similar to the board's goals. Again, great service, being cost-effective, and just continuous improvement is going to be our approach. Just a quick story, I like stories. The other day, I was outside our healthcare agency building at Knoll Road, and some health educators had just come back from one of their community health seminars, and they were carrying large boxes of material, three large crates of materials, and they were pulling them up on the dolly, and they were going to go up some stairs, and I thought, oh, boy, they're going to have a hard time doing that, so I'm going to go help them. So I go over there, and I offer to help, and they say, no, no, and they really didn't want my help, but that didn't stop me. So I leaned down, and I picked up the dolly, and no sooner had I done that when all three crates fell on the ground, and all the material spread everywhere. I said, I'll bet you need my help now. A woman walked by and said, I see you got a man to help you. But the point of that story, that really, our approach here, as I see our administration here, is servant leadership, to listen to the frontline service departments, which I didn't do. My heart was in the right place. I think they would have been happy if I just held the door for them. But I see our role as really being focused on excellent service, and to do that, really supporting those frontline service departments. The county has such a broad depth and expansive services, it's amazing. Public safety, social services, emergency preparedness, job training, food, shelter, and healthcare, it's really an amazing, as I say, breadth of services. And I think with the economy the way it is, more and more people are dependent on these services and looking for us, so it's critical that we listen. You look at different things that have been done before, for example, our great Sheriff's Department, they needed some IT services to do field reporting, and now they're able to do that. Out in the field, they can look up warrants and histories, and they can do their field reporting without having to come back to their offices, so very efficient in a case of the sheriff's calling out for services and getting that support. And just a couple examples, because I think what makes this county as great as it is, is the people here. The incredibly talented, passionate, and committed people that we have working here in the county, and just a couple of examples of it. I had the privilege of attending the firefighters' award ceremony not long ago, and just to actually hear stories where there's a burning building, and firefighters go back into it in order to save the lives of others. It's really inspiring. An oncology nurse in our system who, one of their patients is too ill to come in for medications, and so goes and picks up the medications from the pharmacy and drives them to her house. Also recently, I had the privilege of going to the award ceremony for the probation department. And there was a wonderful story of a woman, a Deputy Probation Officer of the Year named Diana Ayala, who, when one of her probationers, he got sick, and he was admitted to the hospital for tumor, cancerous tumor surgery. She actually went and purchased some board games and so forth, and on her own time went and visited him in the hospital, and stayed with him to help him through what was a very challenging time. So I think there's just some examples of really excellent county service, where people are going above and beyond. As I said, you know, budget and economic challenges, we all know that that's where we are, but maintaining the fiscal stability of our county is crucial, and I think, I know that our board has done that, and our county managers, and you can see, as other counties are struggling much more than ours, you see the wisdom of those decisions. But that's, it's going to be even more important going forward, there's no easy choices, and I think different ways we can do it is the continuous improvement, performance improvement programs that have been started under previous CEO Marty Robinson, and with Assistant CEO Matt Carroll. There's so many examples of the great work that's been going on there. Just a couple efforts to reduce overhead costs, General Services Agency and Public Works, just by sharing heavy equipment, they've avoided the purchase of a new grader at the cost of $425,000. The Sheriff Crime Lab, by improving efficiencies there, they've reduced the turnaround time for their dry substance tests by 86 percent. Land use permits have been reduced by 50 to 70 percent in terms of processing times. And also measuring performance is very important in terms of accountability. And in hospitals, we've seen a program to better manage congestive heart failure patients. The readmit rate in hospitals is about 17 percent, at VCMC it's 10, the goal is 5. And so it's really measuring that performance, which is so important, and teamwork, which is also crucial, and I think that's a real hallmark of our county here. The way people work together, the way departments work together, we hear that from other counties up and down the state, that this is really unusual, that people really do get together and work across silo lines, so to speak. At the same time, as we do have these challenges, it's so important to continue to invest, and invest in technology. There's just no denying the efficiency and productivity benefits of it, and also investing in our people, continuing to train, educate, and provide opportunities for advancement and improvement, and to be that magnet for talent. We've got great talent, and we want to keep it, and we want to continue to build on it, and I think that's the way to do it. Just having an open work environment, looking at innovative programs, one example is the Homeless One-Stop Center. That's a great program of teamwork with the Social Services Agency, Area Agency on Aging AAA, and Public Health, working together to serve more homeless folks, and they've radically expanded the services they provide without adding any staff, simply by locating people under one roof for a couple of hours a week. So very innovative thinking, expanding services, and being cost-effective. We also have great community partners out there, and I think we're fortunate in this community to have such a tight-knit, community-based organization groups. And with that, I would just leave it that with our board, our county workforce, and the community that we have out there, we have the right team in place to deal with a lot of these challenges and come out on the positive side of things. So with that, I just say it's a privilege to work with you all, and I look forward to becoming a part of the broader county family here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome, and we also look very much forward to working with you, and I see a lot of productivity that's going to come out of this young man. We actually have a speaker card, Ms. Lopez, Irma Lopez, if you'd like to come speak. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair Person Parks, Supervisors Bennett, Foy, and Long, and my district supervisor, John Zaragosa. My name is Irma Lopez, a longtime proud resident of Ochsark, and a lifetime resident of Ventura County. I wish to congratulate not only Michael Powers on his appointment as CEO, but also the Board of Supervisors on its wise choice. I have had the pleasure of serving with Mike on the board of the Ventura County United Way and its executive committee for the past several years. Our vision statement at the Ventura County United Way envisions a county where all individuals and families achieve their human potential through education, income stability, and healthy lives. My powers embodies that vision. Again, congratulations and well wishes for a brighter future. Thank you.
And we also have a card from Carol Dean Williams. Carol Dean, we haven't seen you in quite some time. Welcome back to the Board of Supervisors room.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Carol Dean Williams, good morning, Chair, Board, Ms. Cohen. Today is a historic moment for the county of Ventura. Let me explain. I can walk without shoes, I can eat without a table, I can sleep without a bed, but, but, but I cannot live without Ventura County. Let me elaborate. A 1937 Plymouth brought me and my eight-member family straight to Ventura in the year 1945. I have no memory of Arkansas. The B&amp;K Ranch, the corner of Harbor Boulevard and Rundell Baranca poured a concrete cement for a military tent that we lived in. That site is still there today, being farmed. I walked, I ran barefoot everywhere. Still, I cannot live without Ventura County. In a few days, I will have lived with Ventura County for 66 years. My father and mother only lived it for 11 years, such a short span. My mother died the same day she came home from the county hospital, as it was called then. My sister told me, quote, "She died because they made her stay in bed for two weeks," unquote, a blood clot. The new five-story VCMC is a monument to the advancement of medicine. Thank you, Mr. Powers, thank you, Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Our next item on the agenda is a moment of inspiration, and we have Mr. William Fisher from Cal State Shakespeare, California Shakespeare Company. Mr. Fisher, are you here? If you'd like to come to the podium. Mr. Fisher recently received a fellowship and taught at the Globe Theatre in London. He believes that he is the only person in the history of the world who has directed Hamlet and played safety in the NFL for the Houston Oilers. I don't challenge that, I think you perhaps are the only person in the world who has done that. And I want to thank you for coming and give you an opportunity to grace us with some words and inspiration.
Right, and it's difficult to have my back to an audience, I'm not used to it, so. I wanted to thank you for inviting me, Supervisor Parks, to this meeting, I will be brief, I promise. I just wanted to let you know that I too am a product of Ventura County. I was from the first graduating class of Thousand Oaks High School 47 years ago, and this county has been very good to me, and helped me build my home with building the safety, and helped me take care of my 95-year-old mother with the Health and Human Services, so I've been very grateful to the system that has helped me grow as a human being, as a professional. We started the California, may I turn both ways, do you mind?
I don't mind at all, feel free to.
We started the California Shakespeare Company 20 years ago, and I know when you hear the word Shakespeare, oh my goodness, it's that boring, flowery stuff, and it really is not. Shakespeare was the greatest writer of all time, and it needs to be said, it needs to be said often. We are currently doing a production of Macbeth in more, nothing says the Easter season like It is the shortest play that Shakespeare wrote, there's lots of action, there's lots of good things going on, and if you get the opportunity, I just happen to have flyers here, if I may leave some, I believe, about our company. We do it so that people understand what we're saying, and if you give us a chance, we not only do productions for the, for this general public, but we also are called CSC Education Incorporated. We do school shows, and in fact, we have 200 kids coming from Thousand Oaks, and we watched like high school to our Thursday production. So it is a benefit to the community, and I really would encourage it. If you'd like to have one of these flyers, where am I, even, just on the counter, is that all right? Anyway, that's all I really had to say, other than I thank the county for making my life full, giving me the opportunity to do such things as playing football and doing Shakespeare. Thank you so much for listening, my revels are now ended, and thank you so much, Supervisor Parks, and you all have a good day today.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Fisher, and I know that you really did build the theater yourself from the ground up.
Yes.
And also put the whole thing together, so I just thank you for that, and it has a wonderful benefit to our community.
Very good.
Good work, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, I'll ask our new CEO, Mr. Powers, to lead us.
Congratulations to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, we now are on Item 6, which is the minutes of March 15. We have a motion. And a second from Supervisor Bennett, if we could all please vote. That does pass unanimously, and we can go on to our agenda review, and Mr. Powers, if you'd like to take us through.
Thank you, Madam Chair, there are actually no changes to the agenda, we only would add a protest letter to Item 35.
Thank you very much.
Boy, that's pretty good.
Roberta and I practiced.
Madam Chair, I want to break the perfect streak here, it's actually, I actually don't want to make any change in the agenda, I would just like to make a request that we move Item 46 up, and the item Supervisor Long and I have brought forward, if we can move that up, if we can do it as, you know, I know we have a 9:30, if we could do it before the 9:30, I would appreciate that.
Okay.
As soon as possible, as close to 9 o'clock as possible.
Yes, I will also ask that Item 45 be heard with the 9:30, Agenda Item Number 30. 9:30 Agenda Item Number 30. So with those two changes to hear.
The only other thing that I have on our consent item, I'd just like to pull 12 and vote on that separately.
Changes that will be revised.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as revised, and a second from Supervisor Foy, if we could all please vote. Great, and with that, we'll now go to Item 8, which is our consent agenda items, and let's start off by pulling Item 12, and this one would be for Supervisor Foy.
Right, I just like to vote for the second, because I'm just, I look at some of these that we keep getting this money for stuff that is for educationists, and we have, we have limited resources, and we keep spending so much money on all this education process, I'd rather see the money being spent directly for benefits and not continuing trying to do that. So I'd like to, that's my comments on that. So I just vote for it separately, I just can't support that, that's all.
Okay, and this is a ratification of a contractor for the Area Agency on Aging for $20,000, is that correct? For, I'm sorry, $20,000, and this is for use to improve Medicare beneficiary access to preventative and mental health.
It's just more than.
And to enhance low-income benefit programs.
All right, it's the education process is where I have the issue with this, is people are already there, let's spend the benefits, pay for the benefits, instead of just contract for education, that's my opinion.
Okay, and I don't, I'm not going to dispute that with you, but I do see it as described as access to preventative and mental health services and enhancing low-income benefit programs. So with that, could we all please vote separately then on just this Item 12?
Somebody just make the vote, there we go.
We have a motion and a second.
Thank you very much.
And that passes on a 4-1. Then at this time, we have the remainder of the consent agenda items, again, that would be Items 11 through 28. And we have a motion.
And a second.
And a second, and of course, this does exclude 12. And if we could all please vote. Great, and those items then also pass unanimously. And then we can now go to our public comments portion of the agenda, and I do have some public comment cards. We'll start off with Carol Dean Williams again, and then on Mr. Gary Hartung. Carol Dean Williams, going once, going twice. And now we'll go on to our next, our public speaker is Gary Hartung, and Mr. Hartung, welcome.
Good morning. I came all the way down here from Simi Valley, because what I have to talk about, many people in Simi Valley are extremely concerned about it, it's illegal immigration in Ventura County. About seven weeks ago, Mike Antonovich, a member of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors, stated that Los Angeles County had to pay $600 million in benefits to the children of illegal aliens. Now, using some common sense, it's quite reasonable to conclude that Orange County, which is most quite likely the second most densely populated county in California, must have paid at least $300 million for these type of benefits. I think it's quite likely, or excuse me, quite reasonable to conclude that Ventura County must be spending $60 million for these benefits. When you add up all of these benefits to these children of illegal aliens, plus the benefits that adult illegals are getting who manipulate the system, it's quite reasonable to conclude that California must be spending over $2 billion for benefits to the children of illegal aliens and illegal adults. I have spoken about this several times at Simi Valley City Council meetings. Bob Huber, our new mayor, told me last night that he has contacted Elton Gallaghley, who has been complaining for many years that if you want to reduce city, county, state, and the United States federal deficit, you get rid of illegals. And many residents in Simi Valley support him 150 percent. But we need funding from the federal government to have at least eight ICE agents here in Ventura County, and at least two for Simi Valley. Now, Mr. Foy, I gave you two letters in the last six weeks regarding this issue. I expect you to have a common courtesy to reply to me, I asked you twice. I have not heard from you once about this issue. I guarantee you that you need to take this very seriously, because residents of Simi Valley are fed up with illegals moving into our community and destroying the quality of our life. I hope I have made my point, and I expect the Board of Supervisors to contact their federal legislators and demand that we get at least eight ICE agents for Ventura County. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, thank you for coming all the way from Simi. I think that does conclude our public comments, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, and that would be board comments, and we also have, if we would like to, we could go right to the item supervisor Bennett would like to have and hold off on our board comments, would you like to do that? And then we can make sure that we stay on time, and if we do have extra time, we'll go to board comments, so. If that is agreeable, let's then go to Item 46.
Madam Chair, thank, yeah, thank you very much, and thanks to the board for allowing us to take this early, try to make sure that we move this one along promptly, so we don't pinch upon the 9:30 time certain that we have. But I do, for Supervisor Foy's joy, have created a PowerPoint on this issue, but I do.
Might be a lot of competition.
But I think it's, I think it's appropriate to kick it off, and I think it echoes many of the points that are made in the board letter that not necessarily everybody would have an opportunity to look at. So if we load it up, and if the first slide would come up there, and pension reform is needed in California, I think that we all recognize that. Next, and I'll just do that, and if that will help you, it's going to be most appropriate if that reform comes from the state, I think it's very interesting that Supervisor Long and I filed our board. I think it's very interesting that Supervisor Long and I filed our board letter on Wednesday, and it was on Thursday that the governor released quite a few reforms that he wants to explore at the state level. And there are a number of advantages of us exploring that at the state level, and primarily it's that if you reduce the, all these local governments and sort of the haphazard local government approach, and local governments trying to deal with the issue of competing with each other. You know, you change the pension benefits, and then it's more challenging to recruit deputy sheriffs in one area than another. So it is certainly much more appropriate if that can happen. Next slide, please. Ventura County's pension program could benefit from some improvements. I think we recognize that, appreciate citizens that certainly feel that way and have been pointing that out. At the same time, while we should spend some time, and I think that's, that's what our intention is, Supervisor Long and I's intention is, to begin a process of taking some time and thoroughly looking at our pension programs and having the appropriate and healthy conversations that we need to have with that. At the same time, next slide, I think we need to recognize as we launch on this effort that our pension fund does have a solid foundation, that it is much stronger than most out there. And next slide, please. Sometimes when people are comparing various, various counties and their pension situations, one of the things that I think we need to point out is that Ventura County owes nothing on pension obligation bonds. We're, we're taking care of our system without relying on pension obligation bonds, and many other counties have had to go that route because of things that they've done. Next slide, please. Major reasons for the strength, next. The actions of Board of Supervisors in the last decade have created a situation so that in the future, we don't have a lot of these big benefits coming up. The biggest one, next slide, is the fact that in the early 2000s, about eight or nine years ago, we did not give the 350 pension benefit that was out there that is really causing significant pension challenges for lots of places. Next, we were the first local government to be joined by the unions, and, and the unions, we had some unions actually reopen their contracts with us so that they could do this to increase, begin the process of picking up more of their pension contribution that had shifted over to the county. Next slide, please. We have no salary or benefit increases through 2012. We've, we have locked up our contracts so that there will be no increases in salaries or benefits with essentially all of our, all of our bargaining units that we have out there, and I'm sure we'll apply that also to the management. Meanwhile, next slide, please. The pension actuarial is calculating about a 5% annual increase. Now, it's interesting, the way the actuarial is done, you won't see the benefits of that necessarily right away, but it's certainly in the, over a three or four-year period, you're going to see a substantial improvement when you don't have any increases and the actuarial has actually factored in about a 5% annual increase in the fund. Next slide. Our pension funds are at 8.1% since its inception in 1994. And I'd like to clarify what that is. It doesn't mean there was no pension fund before 1994. 1994 is when they have accurate records going back to sort of the new investment approach that they were doing. Back in the 80s, the pension fund was, was restricted, wasn't allowed to invest in stocks, et cetera. This is as far back, and so in the reports that we received from Enes Kanop, who manages that part of the pension fund for us, they can only take their records back to 1994. But still, that is a, that is a very good assumption rate, and the longer we can look at that assumption rate, probably the, the more secure you can, you can feel in it. Next slide. So overall, we're not in a crisis mode that some people claim. We have challenges. We've had many periods in the last 30 years where our pension fund has been less funded than it is at this point in time. We've had periods after that where our pension fund has been overfunded, and it, and it has, it has moved back and forth. Next slide, please. County has time to evaluate changes in state legislation, and we have time to consider our own local improvements. That's one of the points that we would like to make today, is that we have some time, and we ought to use this time. We don't have any union contracts expiring until the end of 2012, and so we've got some time to have these conversations. Next slide, all right. Just, this is more for the record. People need to be clear that there was a court case, a Ventura decision, that dramatically increased the amount of pension payouts that are out there. Next. And it, we, it needs to be clear that the County of Ventura appealed all the way to the Supreme Court, but lost that decision. So it wasn't like the County of Ventura just, just didn't do everything they could with that issue in terms of Ventura decision. Next slide. We cannot unilaterally take away pension benefits that have been granted to current employees. Check that out carefully with, with our county council. And so what we're proposing today is, next slide, is that we amend section 1206, and that puts a moratorium on the annual leave redemption policy. So the other thing stays the same, but it puts a moratorium on that for all new hires to the annual leave redemption policy. And I know Supervisor Long has some comments that she wants to make specifically about the implementation of that. And this is, I think, I think some people are really focused on this. I think the more important action that we have here today in front of us is the next bullet point. And that is, it's not just that this one thing, which admittedly, it's because it applies prospectively, you know, it'll be a few, small number of people at the beginning, but to begin discussions to create the appropriate replacement policy for this, and this policy, because we're going to get rid of that, and to, go ahead, next slide, yes. And to start this short-term and longer-term conversations about pension issues in general. And to really have this opportunity, I think we should, should view this as an advantage to have a period now where our new CEO is on board. And I know one of the things that Supervisor Long and I've talked about, as we've talked about bringing this issue forward for some time, was we thought it was appropriate that on Mr. Powers' first day, this is going to be a long-term process. We wanted our new CEO to be managing this, and that's a reason why we're here today, is on his first day here, to be able to, to begin that process. But this is, I think, the much more significant action that we have today, and that we are empowering and giving direction to our CEO's office to have those conversations with union representatives amongst the managers to review everything and, and come back with what they feel are the appropriate modifications that we should have. Next slide, please. Vast majority of county employees, the final points that we'd like to make, vast majority of county employees retire with very modest pensions. Next slide. Public support for that economic security should be maintained. I think that the, the original role of the defined benefit program was to make sure that people had this basic economic security. And I think the thing that's frustrating the public to, to some extent is that you have some high-profile guy at Bell getting a pension of a million dollars, and people don't think that this defined benefit program was designed to, to give those kinds of lavish pensions out there. Next slide. The tier-two retirement formula. I think even the Taxpayers Association, when they met with me, said they thought this, they, they had no issues with this. They thought that this was appropriate. 1.9% at age 60 is a modest retirement formula. Next slide. And SEIU members' current average salaries, 49.4. Now, we don't have, the, the next slide is not where our, after 30 years of retirement, so we don't have our average tier-two retirement, it's not this high yet. But I took, this is the maximum. This would be if all of the employees stayed for the 30 years at this benefit, they would be receiving what I think the public could support as a modest pension, which is $32,580. That's if somebody was an SEIU member today with 30-year service and they retired at that. And again, I think that, that that is one of the things that we're trying to do is, is suggest that support for that kind of reasonable approach should certainly be out there. Final point we'd like to make is, there will continue to be retirement calculations that will frustrate the board and the public, high, high-profile calculations, and there, it's what we do prospectively. It's very difficult to unring the bell in terms of pension benefits that have been granted out there. So thank you very much for, for your time on this, and Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you, and welcome, CEO Powers, after hearing all this. But yes, I, thank you. In bringing this forward, I believe the governor knew we were doing this, so he jumped out there and presented his 10-point plan. But as you see, it was seven points plus. As you see, many of those areas of interest from the state level, we, we will have lots of discussion over. And I think that there, as we said in this letter, it would help us to be able to have the state better positioned on what they would like to do in the way of pension reform, because we always historically have had the issues of wanting to have the best personnel hired to work for this great county of Ventura, and be able to do that when you're competing in a statewide employment pool. So that, that is an issue, but it's one that, you know, we acknowledge and, and looking ahead that we wish to be able to still be competitive, but knowing that we do need to make some changes and some reform. I think that we've always had cooperation with our managers and cooperation with our labor tables historically, and I know that that will continue. In fact, as has already occurred, we've had great cooperation from our bargaining tables, VCDSA, the Professional Firefighters Association. Now they're stepping forward when they didn't have to, to take these, take these steps, to look ahead at the health of the system, the long-term health of the system. And as Supervisor Bennett already said, we've had a history of, of times where there, we've been challenged with the, the health of that system for a variety of reasons. And as we have seen, in, in every year, as we look at this through our, our budget cycle, and we have Paul Angelo come forward and give us, you know, kind of reports on, on the health of, of retirement systems and, and what we're looking ahead at, we certainly have been aware that we, we have this challenge in front of us. It isn't that anyone has been ignoring it, and in fact, I think we've taken significant steps already to address it, but there's more work to be done. And that's what this does today. And I think that the request to, to have the CEO and the managers and the, the additional stakeholders engage in that conversation and dialogue is the healthiest way for us to move ahead with a reform that is, is both cooperative and fair and equitable for all who, who are a part of this community. And that's certainly the taxpayers and certainly the employees. And on the issue of the annual leave redemption policy, the question was asked as to whether, and when we say move ahead immediately on this, it certainly, there is going to be a window. If you have somebody who's, who's already in the queue, and leave it up to the CEO to certainly vet that. If you have somebody who's already in the queue for the hiring process, and they're in that period of time and transition from a prior employer to coming into the county, I don't think we should be, you know, hindering, hindering that application that's already in the process. If you understand, Mr. Powers, you get what I'm, what I'm saying here? Yeah. Because there's, you know, we could pick an arbitrary number and say, as of this date forward, but just, you know, be, be reasonable with it. And I'm, the managers understand and certainly would agree. I think that the reasonable applicant who's already in the queue, that should be handled appropriately. And then the other one is, the other issue that was asked, question I received, as to new hires and what is a, defined as a new hire. And I, I believe, no, it's not the, you're shaking your head.
No.
We talked about this question. The new, how, what is a new hire? And the new hire is that it isn't someone who's in our county system already and being promoted to a new position, it's truly a new hire, an outside new applicant. So that's defined. I think this is a healthy step for us to take. I think we have no question that we, we wish to do what is best for the long-term health of the system and the, and the long-term health of our, of our workforce. And to do that with transparency, engagement in the dialogue and conversation with all the stakeholders, and to move ahead and, and bring back to us what, what we feel needs to be done to make the recommended necessary steps to keep it a healthy system.
I know we do have a couple of comment cards. Should we go to them before we go to board comments? Okay. Okay, I just have two. David Grau with the Ventura County Taxpayers Association, followed by Jason Hodge with the Ventura County Professional Firefighters Association.
Good morning, and congratulations, Mr. Powers. I'm David Grau from the Taxpayers Association. On March 15th of this year, the Ventura County Taxpayers Association presented the supervisors with a plan for comprehensive pension reform. Today's supervisors Bennett and Long are responding to one of our recommendations, the elimination of the annual leave redemption for all nonrepresented management. Rather than attempting to deal with the problems of top managers using the vacation benefit system to spike compensation and pensions, the supervisors are suggesting a policy change that would apply only to new hires. We disagree with the proposal for several reasons. First, it is calling for long-term discussions. Hopefully, the insistence on long-term discussions is not aimed at just getting through the next election cycle. The Taxpayers Association believes this is one of many items the Board of Supervisors should have addressed immediately following the Ventura decision. We don't believe long-term discussions are needed. What is needed is a commitment to make the long overdue changes needed to eliminate compensation and pension spiking. Second, the proposal prejudges a very important result by stating that, quote, "County council has determined that we cannot unilaterally take away pension benefits," unquote. We disagree with that statement and look forward to receiving a copy of the county council's opinion. But more importantly, the county council is an interested party and should not be put in a position of saying whether or not a benefit he receives could be modified. We do not know if the current county council is availing himself for this benefit, but in 2009, his predecessor received $28,870 by selling annual leave. County council should recuse himself, and the Board of Supervisors should routinely contract with outside council for any opinion on matters such as this. On February 22nd of this year, Contra Costa County supervisors voted unanimously to restrict annual leave redemptions for 2011 and eliminate the benefit entirely, starting in mid-2012, for roughly 300 non-union managers and department heads. They state the action will save the county about $1 million in the first year. Clearly, Contra Costa received an opinion which allowed them to move forward on this issue. Why does Ventura County need a long-term discussion? We agree that the county workforce is made up of dedicated, hard-working, and productive people, and we appreciate their efforts. But we almost realize that the Ventura decision was a tsunami to the pension system that brought unexpected and undeserved benefits to the employee groups. It's way past time for the supervisors to realize what happened and to take steps to bring sanity back to the compensation and pensions of county employees, particularly those in upper management. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And Mr. Hodge?
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm his chairman, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Welcome, Mr. Powers. My name is Jason Hodge, and I represent the Ventura County Professional Firefighters Association. VCPFA represents the firefighters that protect Ventura County and seven of its cities. I come before you today to speak about the strength and stability of our retirement system, the difficult cuts in retirement benefits that you're considering today. I'm going to go a little bit off notes because I think Supervisor Bennett's presentation really kind of hits the nail on the head. What we have in Ventura County through the wisdom of 40 years of this board and our, and our pension system and VACERA is a solid pension system. We have a system that pays out a reasonable rate. It is one of the lowest in the state for firefighters. It is the lowest in the state. My pension benefit is the lowest pension benefit of any other firefighter in the state in 37 at county. You know what? I'm fine with that. I'm happy with what I have. When we had an issue coming up and we knew we had pension problems, this board came to us as a, as an association and asked for us to make changes, asked for us to give back, and we did, because we believe cooperation is the answer, not being adversarial. Despite claims for the contrary, public retirement systems, we all want the best fund in this, in the state, and we're saving taxpayers millions of dollars. It is also the system, we have the lowest benefits. We do not benefit from the formula enhancements that other cities and counties and state workers get. And when you look at cutting our benefits, you're looking at cutting away from those who already have the least. who already have the least. We're all aware that in this and other systems, there are a handful of employees, usually top managers, that retire at much higher pay. But those few individuals are not the average employee, the average copper firefighter going out the door after career of 30 years, laying it all on the line for the citizens of the county. And attempting to deal with those few, we should not throw out the baby with the bath water. We'd like to make a simple request, that you proceed cautiously, carefully, cooperatively. When I go to work every day, I turn on the radio, I listen to the news. It's interesting how I find myself under attack, and how it affects how I feel about myself and my job and my county. And I hear my fellow employees, whether it's people in our GSA staff, or whether it's the clerk of the board, or anyone, we are under a mental attack right now because of the cacophony of half-truths and lies out there about these systems. So we can't solve this problem. And it's not a question of an amputation, but it might be a question of a transfusion. So please, come to us, come to the associations, come to the VCDSA, come to SEIU. We'll find a way to solve this problem together, but there's no reason to act with any amount of haste. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hodge. And I know board members have some comments. Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yeah, I want to thank, you know, the audience and thank the speakers for their input this morning. And I do also want to share that, looking at the supervisor's presentation, that Ventura County has been very conservative in the employee benefits for our employees. I support that, looking at the reduction of our pension cost. But I'm looking at this proposal to reduce costs if it includes new hires, as was mentioned before, because I think that our current employees have already earned what they have. And also to clarify that this is, again, only for new employees. I just want to share that, underline that. And also that, make sure that we look at this program at a long-term implication to find out if there's anything that might affect us in the future, or our employees also. And I support this action because I think it'll help us in the pension concerns that we have of Ventura County. But I support it with a caution too, that I'd like to share that our managers, we're asking our managers to help us out, but our managers are 24/7 employees. They're on the job 24/7. They work in evenings, they work on weekends, they work on trips that we go out to lobby for our businesses and so forth with no additional pay. They don't get overtime, they don't get double time, and they work for, actually, no additional pay, as I mentioned before. And I have personally worked for many decades as a manager without any additional pay. In fact, when I worked in my other job, you know, I worked over one year with no additional pay, where we were recording leave, or work that we did, or performed without additional pay. And I think I put in something like 2,080 hours without any additional pay, and ultimately I lost them. Those hours will never be recouped again. If you put those hours together that a manager works, that number becomes very minimal. If an employee's working for $20 an hour, by the time he puts all that extra time, he probably end up maybe earning a buck fifty an hour, after you look at the 24/7 that he's doing. So I think it's important that we recognize our management employees to the point that they put additional work without additional pay. And in the private sector, where I have my own business, those employees get a bonus, a bonus where there is several thousand dollars or whatever. Here in the county, we don't. We have minimal benefits that I think are important to our managers, and I think that we need to take care of our managers, and we need to take care of them and also to make sure that the public understands that our public employees, whether they're managers, whether they're public safety, whether they're SEIU employees, our employees are dedicated to the public, and they have earned their pay and their benefits. So I just wanted to share that with you, and especially with our public employees. They came up, their contract was not due for another year and a half. They came in and they helped out with 2.5% of their pension. Our SEIU employees came in and gave 3% of their pension to help our pension concerns. So we need to applaud all those employees that are helping us out. But I just want to share with you that it really concerns me that the public has a misconception that public employees are not earning their pay. And in fact, I had one management employee that went with me to DC. We were out there a whole week with no additional pay, and we were working from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 in the evening for the whole week. But that really concerns me, and I just want to share with the public and with the audience that our public employees do earn their money. And I would welcome anybody to come also with me at my office and sit next to my employees and work the 24/7. In fact, one of my employees, and two of my employees, we worked over the weekend, Saturday and Sunday, all day long, no additional pay. But I just wanted to share that with you because there's a misperception that they're getting overpaid, that they're not really productive, and I just want to dispel that. I just wanted to get that off my chest, because I think it's important that we protect our employees, whether they're public employees or public employees, because I had my own business also for 18 years, and I can compare the employees that work with me in the private sector to employees that work for the government, and they're just as good or better. I just want to share that.
Thank you. Supervisor Foy, you have some comments too?
Yes, I do. First of all, I just want to say that I'm excited to see that finally, we're going to start dealing with this pension issue, and I appreciate that. And I think that, I've been saying this for a long time, so I'm glad to hear that you guys are bringing something forward. I mean, to me, I'd like to see a lot more expansive stuff, but I'm just excited you're bringing something forward. And I do, I like that. I think though that we need to put some perspective on this. There's a lot more things we need to do, because the goal here, I think at the end of the day, just for every single person that's out there on a pension, everybody that's just about to receive a pension, on my personal side is you want to protect that. And I don't believe we can protect it at all for any of you if we don't do major pension reform. Because it's, you know, you can come up with anything you want to come up with, but the numbers don't lie. We are unsustainable. There's not going to be enough money to pay the pensions. It's just not going to be there. So we need to protect going forward. So anyway, I'm excited about that thing. But I do want to make a couple comments. I do want to say, in a couple areas, we did not do 3 at 50. We heard that. But I'm going to tell you, if you calculate our program, when you're 55, it's as good as 3 at 50 as anybody else's is. So let's be honest about what we have. This is a tremendous benefit that's out there right now. And yes, in the Ventura decision, we did lose that case. Supervisor Bennett was true, they went to Supreme Court trying to do that. But there's a lot of things that we did allow in our benefits that we didn't have to do. We had some additional benefits that didn't have to be done. And you are seeing things change. Like I said, here in Contra Costa, there's an article about they suspended and got rid of their leave benefits. Now, there's a question in regards to county council, if we can do that here. I'm not, you know, in case, based on, they had some different things. But I think at the end, I think all of us want to protect as much as possible what people have and try to maybe find another way. I think the Taxpayer Association is clear in regards to there is some things that need to be done. There's no question about that, and they have some great ideas. One of the things I think is transparency. And the idea is, as it was said earlier here, that our previous county council was receiving $28,000. Hey, that's the system, that's what he gets. But you know what? If he's going to get it every year, put it in his salary. Put it out there publicly, so everybody sees it, that it's just what it is. Let's be very transparent about what we do. Let's, don't try to hide those things. Because you know what? The thing is, the labor is worthy of his wage, and I think that's true. People begin to be paid. I mean, whatever county council gets, whatever anybody else gets, what any of us get, let it be out there, and let it be transparent, so the public does not have a deceptive view, because things are trying to be hidden in there, and they're there. And I know most people don't see that, because I think Supervisor Zaragoza was very clear that the hard, hard-working people that do the jobs in this county, very difficult jobs, unique jobs in a lot of ways. But let's just be honest about what we pay people. Let's be transparent with that, and let's do that. The other thing is, I do have a couple questions on what we are doing here. I'm trying to understand. It sounds like a moratorium on new hires for this accrued vacation sellback, right? Is that correct? Okay, does that mean it's a moratorium, or it's gone for good?
Well, I think that the, this is upon the advice of county council, you put a moratorium on until you figure out what it is is going to be your replacement, because if you have a vacation policy, you have to have some kind of, it is, you know, one, for us to try to get into all the complexities of it, we're certainly not prepared to do that at this point in time. But it's a moratorium to let them look at all of that. There are some legal benefits that come. If you have a vacation, then you have to treat it as, what do you do if somebody doesn't take that vacation, et cetera? They may come up with a completely different change. But we have a lot of, we have a lot of variation in that implementation of that policy. We have some managers that are able to cash in 288 hours, others cash in 208 hours. We have an OSSEIU down at 80 hours. So our question is, make sure we tell the new people coming in, because that's one of the issues, so that you don't have that legal hangup. They say, hey, I thought I was promised this. So we're just trying to make sure everybody's informed, you're not promised anything. And after they do a thorough examination of it, they'll come up with what they think is a replacement.
Which, okay, which is good. So then, even if things change, and you can sell back 12 hours, and one hour, zero hours, there's no accruing during those times? Is that what we're saying? There's no accruing? So if this takes one month, two months, six months to do, is a new hire that may be hired next week, is there accruing of any of that if, to sell back? I guess, because right now, we're saying there's no sellback for anybody going forward. It's a moratorium on it. And that's what I'm trying to understand.
Sure. That'd be my attention. I see Mr. Powers reaching for his...
Mr. Nicole, can you address that, please?
I know Supervisor Long, that was kind of what her thought was too.
I'd appreciate if we could clarify. I believe the purpose here is, this will set a moratorium on the ability to convert earned leave time to cash that has the retirement impact. It will not, at this point, modify the rate at which someone accrues, depending upon which unit they're in. It would continue accrue time, but it no longer has a convertible cash value that can be turned into a pension base.
Okay. All right. Is that for new hires, John?
Yes, sir. And new hires, as I understand from the board, is defined as someone coming within, from without the county system. If you already work for the county, as of now...
Nothing changes.
Nothing, it does not change. But anyone brought in new now knows, and when they hire on, are aware, that the rate of time they accrue is not convertible to a dollar value that affects pension.
Right. Okay, okay, that's good. And then, the other question is, what kind of time, when you talk about, there's a paragraph in there that says, we have, because of the union contracts, future of the county has extended period of time. What does that mean? Are we talking about three months, four months, five months? I mean, you can't, are you talking about two years?
I'll respond to that since I think the two of us do this. We can't, we, you know, we cannot go and unilaterally change. In fact, even the governor's proposal says, the governor proposes, as long as a union contract is in place, the governor's not proposing to change any of those benefits. So we have contracts that last until the end of 2012. So for virtually all of our employees, except for the unrepresented class, you cannot make a change until you negotiate new changes with these contracts. So since we've tried to keep our managers with our represented classes also as we've moved forward, it seems that it's appropriate for us to work, you know, spend this time to really have those discussions, so that when we enter into the new negotiations with the unions, we've had healthy conversations with the unions in terms of where that's going to go. So that's what's, you know, in the long run, I think that that's, I think you have to recognize, that's, the conversations can take place, the agreements can potentially take place before then in terms of where we're going to go, but that's when...
Well, that's, I guess, that's where I was going. I wanted to understand, is the agreement going to take place in the next two or three, four months? We can put it all, and it doesn't take a place effect until things? Because I think the problem is, if we don't put that together now, and we don't show the public that we're serious about making some real changes, we've got some real problems. On the other side is, I think it's also important that, you know, union representation should know what we're going to do forward. And I know we've always started with management. Management leads the way with that, and I think that we should put this into place. I don't think we should be waiting 18 months to get this done, because I believe other things will be done to us if we don't do it for us. And I think it's better to be on the leading edge ourselves. And so anyway, that's where I'm going. I don't know if you have a comment, Mr. Nicole, on that?
And I would also just say thank you for being on the leading edge on this, and that I think, as Mr. Hodge indicated, it's a lot better to have the cooperation than to do an adversarial type of relationship. And we have found success with that, with our unions, to be able to work with them cooperatively and be able to make sure that the taxpayers of Ventura County are well-served. I think what Supervisor Foy pointed out regarding transparency is a huge issue. We were not supportive, the county of Ventura was not supportive of the Ventura decision, which basically converts benefits to a cash allowance to your pension. But what we can do is make sure that we are transparent. We understand now what benefits do get folded into your pension, that we can look clearly at that and see that what we do, make sure that we know what the pension is going to be in terms of the benefits that we give. So I want to thank both Supervisors Long and Bennett for bringing this forward. I think it is definitely a step forward, and I look forward to seeing what we can do with this. If Mr. Powers has something to comment on, I welcome that. And I would like to move this forward. We have some other items on our agenda, and 40 high school students that need to get back to school.
Great. And if I could just clarify a few things, I know, appreciate that Supervisor, Mr. Powers wants to make a couple comments. But one, the, I think we recognize that we don't have a perfect system. We have some problems, and that's what this attempt is, to say that there is something that's been pointed out. I think that particularly is an issue that's been pointed out, and appropriately, I might say, pointed out by the Taxpayer Association. They are doing an appropriate thing in terms of pointing out those things that don't have as much transparency out there and saying, hey, there should be more transparency. Support that and appreciate that role that they're playing with that. So what we're trying to do is say, if we have something that we think needs to be changed, at least don't let that pool of people that have that grow while we try to get ready to deal with that. The other thing I'd point out is that the governor has a series of proposals that are out there. I think it's kind of, it's interesting that in many of those things the governor's proposing, we've already done. We refuse to do retroactive increases when we've been asked repeatedly, and he has a whole thing on retroactive. We began the process of saying the employees need to start picking up more of the contributionist, which is one of the things that he has out there. I think that there are two particular parts of, out there that are right for us to look at, and that is more employee pickup, and the whole issue of what the value is in terms of changing your compensation in the last year is modified when you go to the three-year averaging. And the governor has a proposal going forward for three-year averaging for new hires also. But the, just to comment in terms of timing, we've got a new CEO, we've got huge budget issues coming from the state, coming forward with us. I think the first thing that they have to do is come up with what is, what do they think is the suggested replacement policy here for the annual leave, because we're on this moratorium. But there, I don't think there's any way you have fast conversations about a complicated issue like this, particularly while we're trying to watch and see what the state does. If the state makes certain changes, then that modifies what we would be doing here, you know, in terms of our contract. So as much as everybody likes this to happen, you know, I think we have to recognize it is going to take some time to have all of these conversations with union representatives, for them, on a topic that is as complicated as this. The important thing is, as we said, we're not in an immediate crisis. We are, we do have a solid foundation, and we have a great opportunity to really have good, healthy conversations, and I think we want to take that opportunity to do that before we get to 2012. Thank you.
And I know we have... And I know we have some more comments, Supervisor Zergos and then Supervisor Long.
And I just also wanted to share that I heard, you know, our firefighters share too that they have the lowest pension in the state, too. So when we, when we look at the, when we talk to the, our firefighters, our public safety, and also SEIU employees, I think it's important that we look at that, too, you know. And I think Supervisor Bennett mentioned that the, probably the average pay was, what, about $20,000, $39,000 or so. People have in their minds that, and I want to mention again, that employees come out with $200,000, $300,000 pensions, and that is not correct. But I think that our quality of life is extremely important and that we work with our public safety employees and also our SEIU employees.
Thank you. And we have a motion from Supervisor Long, waiting for a second. Supervisor Long?
Sure. Mr. Bennett, Supervisor, bringing this forward. One, I think that this isn't something that just became an election cycle. Frankly, everything we do on this board is directed towards what is good for the community and good public policy, and it's year-round. It's not what happens to follow an election cycle. And I'd also say that to not make this personal, to not look at people who are serving this board at will, employees, I'll say, that they do so with the highest of integrity. They do so understanding what is good for the bottom line, for the county family and for all of us in this county, including the taxpayers and the community residents. So I would ask that we not have reference that makes personal imply something with a personal, with an employee. I don't think that serves any of us well. And I do think that our efforts here have been, one, we have, and we've said it often enough, and whether, we've said it and acted on a, for years now, to really hold the line and be very aware and conscientious of the taxpayer dollars and the benefits and work environment for our county employees, I think to bring balance to both. And I think we have a strong history in this county, better than most counties. And I'll say it, and I'll say it many times. But moving forward is what we're talking about today, and as has been said, repeated enough, that the CEO will be both in the work that we move forward on, transparent and inclusive, and invite all conversations and dialogues. And as we move ahead over the next few months, that we come out with a product that serves us well. And I'll just leave it at that. And the motion's on the table.
And a second from Supervisor Bennett, if we could all please vote.
I'm not going to be able to support this only from their standpoint, that it has no timelines and I don't want to drag it on. But I do really recommend you for bringing it up and doing this. We just need to solve these issues early. Thank you.
Thank you. And that passes in on a 4-1. And we'll now go to our item 29, which is a 9:30 time certain. And this is both a status report on Westminster Free Clinic and a presentation of certificates to their wonderful student volunteers who are interns at the clinic and help keep it running. And I see them filing into the room with their scrubs. The Westminster Free Clinic in Thousand Oaks is a private, nonprofit healthcare provider for residents in East County, largely driven by the efforts of our dedicated volunteer health professionals and also the students that assist them. Again, they have physicians that volunteer their time for free as a service, and as a result of that, people who could not otherwise receive healthcare do receive it. The clinic serves a broad spectrum of public health and healthcare issues, including free patient care, prescriptions, resource and referral advocacy, free legal services, and dental screening services. The innovative service model includes integration of student volunteers who work alongside healthcare professionals, which provides the students invaluable training in the healthcare field. And it also, of course, enables Westminster to continue serving the growing population. And I know also students are really valuable in outreach efforts, too. And I know we have Lisa Saffinelli here to give us a presentation on Westminster, and then we'll go ahead and hand out the certificates, which we have done in the past. I think it's great and something that will help you all in your future, hopefully as you go off to college and into professions, to know that you have served our community very well, as well as we see the Board of Supervisors certificate of appreciation because we do appreciate the work you do. So Lisa, if you'd like to come on up. I know you have a brief PowerPoint, if we can have that put up on the screen.
Well, I really, really appreciate all the support you have given Westminster Free Clinic, Chairman Parks and Supervisor Long, Supervisor Foy, Supervisor Zergos and Supervisor Bennett. And congratulations, Mike. So happy for you. It's great. And in saying that, I hope today I can give you some hope and give you a positive report and update on what's been going on with the investment you've made in our clinic, as well as thanking you for that. I also thank you for consideration of continuing that funding in the future. We, as, let's see, I'm... Westminster Free Clinic has been around for 16 years. We're a very unique model, and we're providing a huge contribution to the community with your support. We, the population we're serving has doubled in the last few years. Every week, we're having 15 to 20 new uninsured people coming through our doors in addition to the people that we're regularly serving, which is over 100 a week. And over 6,000 people are served a year at our clinic, and we have outreach, which I'll mention later. But the demographics are changing. Before, it was mainly the people worked in the restaurants and other gardeners, other kinds of workers like that. They continued to struggle. But now we're seeing baby boomers, white-collar workers, people, whole departments being laid off at some of our companies around here. And because people are between the ages of 55 and maybe 62, 63, people are having a hard time finding unemployment. And so they go for their savings, they lose their homes, and end up at our doors eventually because they need medication, they need a prescription, they need to see a doctor, and they can't afford the $300 that would cost them. So we are also seeing a lot of people with chronic healthcare conditions and people who are unable to pay for insurance and are also unable to afford the healthcare themselves. The average, most people are between the ages of 21 and 63, and that population is typically not Medi-Cal eligible unless they have children under a certain age. ACE, of course, is a great program, and we refer anybody in that is eligible there that has a percent federal poverty level limit. But, so these are people who are uninsurable. And we're unique because we have our wonderful high school students, which I'm really glad that you're honoring today. This is half of our students. We have 74 high school students who are partners with us, with our volunteer healthcare professionals. That makes our model very unique, and we have, I'll tell you a little bit in a few minutes about some of the stories with them. We also are unique because we're enlisting the generosity of the community with the funds that you give us. We're able to leverage 200 medical volunteers, we're able to get Quest Diagnostic to give us a 96% discount on labs, we're able to get a lot of community for-profit providers helping provide access to care for people who are uninsured. Patient Residence is East County, which is typically a little harder access to care for people who may not have transportation to get over the grade as easily for some of their care. 30% are coming from Simi Valley Moore Park, and a little less than 70% are coming from Thousand Oaks Newbury Park. And so that's where our residents are coming from. And majority, as I mentioned, are 20 to 62 years of age. The reason for that is, the younger, what we usually, we have pediatricians every week, but once they come to our doors, we serve as a bridge to get them into the county system. And we do that with ACE, and we do that with Medi-Cal. We actually have a case manager who, anybody can get out of our doors. We don't want to duplicate service. We're only there to fill a gap. So we are filling a gap in this healthcare safety network. There's always people who are in transition, between jobs, don't have the eligibility to get into any of our programs we have in the county, and so that's who we're serving. So we serve as a referral servants, as I mentioned. We ask no questions. We will provide access to care to anyone feeling that it's a public health issue. If we have someone that needs a hepatitis B shot, and that's an $80 shot, we feel they need to get that shot so that when we eat out at a restaurant, we know we're safe as a public. And so we really provide free flu shots and many other services free so we get early, you know, access to care to people. Preventive care is really, really important. Sometimes when there's a charge, when people, we find out people don't have the same cellphone number every month because they can't pay their cellphone bill. And so when it comes to decisions about how to, whether to pay rent or food, healthcare is something they'll put off, and that costs the whole county a lot more money. Main diagnoses are in order from top to bottom. That's pretty much national, from heart disease to diabetes to respiratory issues, all kinds of infections that, again, if you catch early, when they have bronchitis, it doesn't become pneumonia, they don't end up in the hospital system. And so we want to catch people right away so they can get well and get back to work or find a job. We pay for these referrals, except for the gynecology. So what happens is, and these funds, lab tests come from individual donors, mammograms come from all the local rotary clubs, they give us the funds to pay for those. We saved 4 women live this year who we've identified with stage 1 breast cancer. One of the women is in the left corner there, she let us use her picture. She has a 14-month-old baby and had no way to pay for all the different mammograms and ultrasound images that are required to get into the state program for treatment. So there is a state program, but again, we've served as a bridge to be able to show and prove that she had cancer so that she could then get into the program and get treatment early. So we had one single mom with 4 kids, and then a woman who was 50. All these people now are alive to take care of their families and continue to live. It's really exciting. X-rays and radiology services, we do have a 50% discount on those. Again, that helps our doctors with diagnosis. Our eye exams and glasses are all free. So local schools knowing kids that can't afford glasses and eye exams, parents who can't see to drive safely. We're able to work with our local partners who provide those, that, over 100 glasses, glasses free each year. So we, the $150,000 in tobacco settlement funds help, make it possible for us to leverage $1.2 million in donated goods and services and matching foundation funds. How that breaks out, actually on our 990, that's even, that's very conservative, the $900,000. That includes all of the doctors' time, the time of our pharmacists, our chiropractors, our physical therapists, our podiatrists, our dietitian, our nurses, and also our lawyers, I'm sorry, our lawyers. Everybody's giving time. Our local community, in addition to their full-time job, is coming and wanting to make sure everybody has a chance to have care. It's very exciting. So that's their time. And also, we have donated space, and we have donated utilities, and we have donate, which we don't even count, and we have donated 96% for our labs and other kinds of services that you can see there. I broke it all out for you. The reason matching funds is so important, which is true for county, too, is for foundations to invest in us, they need to see that we have a stable fund that's going to continue, that is going to pay those basic things that they're not funding. And so your, the fund of this tobacco settlement actually makes it so we can have our doors be open at all, so those doctors can donate their time and students can be part of our program. The $150,000 is just paying for our basic, basic things that make our doors stay open, like malpractice insurance, which is very low for us. So your contribution is huge to us. It may only fund maybe 1 nurse practitioner or physician in their job for the year, but for us, it makes us be able to serve 6,000 people and harness all this great generosity of the community to help their local community members. It's very much a community-based effort, and you're helping us make that possible. So with that, we also engage our youth, who are local high school students from 7 different high schools, and they are able to have this opportunity to help their community, too, and work right in partnership with our physicians. And every year, our students are, because it's a 2-year commitment, 12 months of the year, that they come at 4:30, right? At 4:30, they go home 11, 10:30, 11 at night from their volunteering that week. They are able to have this experience, they get some scholarships. We have this student on the left here, she's now at Stanford University, she just got in this fall. We have students going, just, one student just came back from graduating from Wellesley. She got all of her cousins and family members involved, they all have decided to go to college now, and they're in college. We have 1 boy who came in high school, and he was very much just a cool guy, and he's bilingual, and he wanted to do something for his community. He went to Moore Park College for a year, he's got the bug to be a doctor, went to Moore Park College, got straight A's, went to Westmont, got straight A's. He's a 2nd year now at Stanford Medical School. He's going to be a physician. We have many, many stories like that. So this experience changes our lives, and the scholarships they're able to get help them pay to be able to go to school. Every year, we get 1 student into the 8-year med school program right out of high school. We just got, had 1 student accepted at UC San Diego this year. Last year, we have a student at UC Rochester in New York. This is amazing, they don't have to take the MCATs. And they say what gets them in is their internship with us because it's so comprehensive and they get such a great experience that the interview process, they have the grades, but that's what makes them stand out. So with that, as you probably know, we decreased the emergency room costs for every visit that is not appropriately, you know, for something, a real true ER visit, $600 times 3,000 people, that's over $1.8 million a year we're saving. We decreased the congestion in emergency rooms for people who are insured and taxpayers by getting over, keeping over 100 people a week out of the emergency rooms to get their, try to get their prescriptions or whatever. We're actually helping to keep the system less congested for all of us. If we, they put off care, a lot of people have diabetes and lupus and many chronic issues. If we help them early, and they actually are well, they actually then don't have, don't end up in our hospital, county hospital system with end-of-life care early because they're passing away before their time. So, and we also are helping people get back to work. We had a mother carried in by her family, and she had lupus, and she couldn't, she was in so much severe pain, she couldn't walk anymore. And she's a primary breadwinner of her family. And she was able to see 1 of our physicians for free, she got labs for free, she got medications for free. We gave her a wheelchair donated to us by the rotary. Her family wheeled her out, and a couple of months later, she came back walking, wheeling the wheelchair back to give to the next person who needed it. She's back working, taking care of her family. That is a good investment for our whole, for our whole county. So we, as I mentioned, have 200 medical volunteers. And just very quickly, we also are not receiving state and federal funds. Again, we're not duplicating services in the healthcare system. We are filling a gap. With that, our teams, very quickly, you can see they're in action, they're part of our, providing the care to our patients. The physician in the middle, in the middle picture there, you can see some of these faces out here in the audience today, that's a picture of them. He actually does grand rounds at the end of the night with them, talks about medical cases. If a lot of people that night came in with eye infections, he'll talk about why eye infections happen, what kind of typical treatments are for eye infections, what are the different standard procedures. So students really get to learn a lot. In addition to the helping their community, they actually get to learn and be treated as part of their medical team. And this just shows they go through a lot of training to get to the place where they could actually be part of our medical team. They wear scrubs. Well, once they have their names on their scrubs, that means they've graduated to a certain level of care. They have passed 10 different skill sets in order to get their names embroidered on their scrubs, and they're actually able to assist patients on their own. So it's, it takes a number of months for them to get to that place, and they go through a lot of training. They also get to go to the Ventura County Medical Center, they get to go to the Kaiser to learn about other kinds of careers in healthcare. We have a lot of field trips that we offer. All this is possible because of the $150,000, because that gives us a way to open our doors. We raise the money through grants and foundations for all these other experiences, but we have to have a way to have our doors open. And also the outreach that Supervisor Parks, Chairman Parks mentioned earlier, is that they actually go out in the community. We found that what happens is people often don't know, especially guys, don't go for care. And so, for example, we were at a local church, we did an outreach, we found a dad who was not able to see, he had 2 little kids, and his wife kept saying, just go get your blood sugar checked, it doesn't hurt, you're here anyway. And she finally convinced him, his blood sugar was over 500. We were sure we were wrong. We tested him 3 times. And he, his vision was deteriorating because of his diabetes, that he'd not been to a doctor in years. And so we told him he should go to the emergency room right away because that, you could be in a diabetic coma with a blood sugar that high, it shouldn't be over 200 non-fasting. And instead, he, we also told him about the clinic. He put off going to the emergency room because of cost, the fear of the cost, and he came to us, he's now under control, his vision has gotten better, he's able to be safe driving, he's safe, he can work and take care of his family. And again, we caught him earlier rather than when he actually had an event and ended up in the ER. The question might be with healthcare, federal healthcare reform, where do we fit into the picture? So I just wanted to briefly, this is my last slide, I wanted to briefly address that. As you can see with the green, the darker green there, that's about 32... As you can see with the green, the darker green there, that's about 32%. If you've heard any of the projections, there's going to be about 30% of the nation that still will be uninsured with the rollout of healthcare reform. That's the population we're serving now and because of ACE, we are able, the ACE actually is actually ahead of the game, so that will be similar. So that's the population we will be continuing to serve. And also people who are in transition and falling through the cracks in their paperwork isn't going to help them, make them be eligible. So we will continue to be needed and serving a really important purpose in the county. And so the question is whether her mom has her tumor identified early and her mom gets the care she needs and she's okay, or her mom is gone because she's diagnosed late. And we certainly see that story in our clinic every day where people, we're able to help people not die early. And you are a part of that and thank you and hopefully you feel good about the difference you're making. That's my contact information. Thank you and thank you for supporting our students and.
And not only do the students have the benefit of working with the doctors right next to them and getting, hearing from them about medical care, you also get to see a great administrator and the passion that she has, which is a whole nother field that you can go into also. Thank you, Lisa. We do have certificates, you want to help me hand them out or how are we going to do that?
Veronica's the team coordinator, she should.
I know they're alphabetical, if you all know about where you are in the line, we can go ahead and read them off. We have, okay, Cindy Andre?
Andre.
Andrade, see? Maybe you should do that. Okay, all right. And if you want to read off the names soon. Cindy, congratulations, thank you for your work. You want to do them each one?
I think so.
I'll think about how to round them. Ibera Ramula.
Ibera.
Ramon Jimenez, I don't see him. Juan Johan. Juana San Martin. Aray Alita Mayo. Vivian Villa. I'm sorry, Iliana Villa. And Anna Alvarez. plays in the healthcare safety net in our county. And just also to point out to the students, VCMC has a nationally recognized family physician training program in the interest of not recruiting too early. And also great nursing programs, congratulations. It is, it is wonderful and it also is one of those fields in this economy that is still growing, going into the medical field. So nice to see that opportunity provided for these youth. I think we could do a, we probably don't need a motion on this, do you think? No need to receive, okay. So let's then move on to our next item. And this one, we're going to hear, it's item number 30 and we're going to hear it in unison with item number 45. So I'll ask that we open both those items. And Mr. Dershowitz, would you like to make a presentation?
Well, there's not much of a presentation on my behalf, it's just a matter of a second hearing on our presentation on March 22nd. We recommend your, adopt the ordinance as we, as outlined and presented on March 22nd. In addition to that, we would request your board appoint six members of the tobacco advisory committee and then appoint Mark Assar and Frank C. as the chair and vice chair of those committees. Other than that, I'm just pretty much open for comments and questions.
The item, also item 45 is related to this because it takes the same recommendations that we had previously where we were going to set aside $300,000 of which would be distributed by the tobacco settlement committee. And at this point, I would ask that we actually increase that from 300,000 to 350,000 and that we also set aside the 150,000 for Westminster for three years as that will allow them to have a greater stability and availability of funds to continue to do the outreach that they need and as they say, keep their doors open. This is a request that both Supervisor Long are moving forward with. And I think that Westminster has demonstrated that they do have a successful program and that they are facing in this, particularly in these economic times, they are facing some particularly critical issues in terms of being able to have the funding, to be able to leverage those funds and also to keep their malpractice insurance and keep their valuable student interns. So I would ask that we go ahead and approve the requested motion on actually both items and that way we can amend the ordinance to allow for the 350,000 and also for Westminster to continue that funding for three years.
And I'd just ask for the board's support on that because I think in reviewing this and reviewing the history of the applicants who've come forward to the tobacco advisory committee, you'll see that there's been, the strength of the applications has consistently been Westminster Clinic and others. And I think that to ask for the security of having a three-year commitment, this doesn't, this still will require that they give reports back and every year, they're looked at to make sure they're performing, but that the guarantee will give them the stability to leverage the other funds for programs that have already been mentioned this morning. I think by having the advisory committee then have $200,000 to disperse, again, you look at the pattern of what groups have applied and been receiving and you'll see there's a handful that consistently they meet that standard. And so to have the advisory committee take a look at that and report back to this board as to those funds and the use of them would probably be a healthy thing to do also. I mean, they do it every year for us anyway as part of this process. But I think that this one makes sense, as has already been said, they have, Westminster's proven themselves to be a significant safety net for us in this county, particularly for that end of the county.
Supervisor Floyd.
I agree, I mean, there's no question of what they do and the leverage of the money is great. One of the things I guess I'd ask is that if we could add to this motion that we'd ask the commission to come back with a recommendation. One of the things that I asked the CEO, Mr. Powers, to do is to give me a picture of all the different groups in the last few years that have gotten some of this money and they're very, very consistent, they're almost all the same all the time. So maybe the commission could come back with some recommendations on, like you've done something here with three years, maybe they have a whole thing that they come back with something, all these for three years and do that and reduce the commission's needs because some of the commissioners said there's this very little money for us to do anything with and maybe we could come up with a plan, maybe give them, you know, 90 days or 120 days, come back with something, here's what we're going to do for three years. And then during that three years, if they don't have to meet, or maybe they say, "We don't, we won't meet during that three years," or whatever it is, they just come up with their own plan, it's their commission. But, and then consistently, because I know some of the complaints where a lot of people have come all the time, make presentations, never get any money and it's just, we're asking them to do a lot of things. So maybe there's an opportunity for them to come back and maybe give us new recommendations on that while we go along with your three years for this situation. And so that's what I'd like, if possible, to add that to the, and let them come back because again, they've made some comments that we feel like we're not, best use of our time here because there's no money really to give and everybody gets the same thing. So that's what I'd like to add to it, but I think it's a good recommendation you're making.
Madam Chair, number one, I support the motion in terms of going forward. I think that there's some unique things about Westminster right now that call out for them having sort of a sense of a three-year commitment in terms of their unique funding situation, et cetera. So that's why I support it. I don't want it to be interpreted, interpreted in any way that the other three organizations that generally have been getting the money also aren't, you know, right there that we really support. And I think that that segues into what Supervisor Floyd said. Whether we make it part of this motion or not, I think the committee is always able to come and say, "Hey, we think, you know what we think we ought to do? We think, these are the ones that we've been funding, we think you ought to do them all for three years." I would welcome that, quite frankly. I think if you look at the other three, they're really strong, viable, you know, Livingston and Rainbow Alliancements and long-term, I can't imagine the board ever not funding them, you know? So if that's what the, what the, what the committee wanted to do, so an invitation that if they want to do that, that we'd be open to it is probably, I think, the way to, the way to word that.
Overrule what they do, but if they, that's a good word, invitation. If they'd like to come and tell us that this is something like what they're bringing.
That could, that could make some sense, but I'd support this motion right now with that caveat.
Supervisor, there goes.
Madam Chair, I do too, you know, the presentation was excellent, they're doing an excellent job and they're leveraging those dollars, which I think is extremely important. But I also believe that, that the new tobacco committee should look at it and share with us their concerns and I'm sure that they're probably going to approve that, but I believe that we just put this committee together and they maybe should look at the, at the funding of $150 per year for the next three years.
And I think the way that we would need to do this is to first have item 30 before us and approve that ordinance and then item 45, which would be to amend it from 300 to 350, is that correct, Mr. Smith?
I think so. Well.
It's the second.
Madam Chair, I don't think you can approve item 30 and item 45, you know, together, they're inconsistent.
Okay.
So if you want to adopt the $350,000 limit, then I think you would approve Board Letter 45, recommendation two, which will amend the proposed ordinance to include, to go from 300,000 to 350,000. And then it would be required that we republish notice and have a final adoption at the next regular.
So then, what I would then ask is that, back to item 45, then that we do go ahead and approve 45 and also invite the tobacco settlement committee to consider doing all four next time that they, they meet.
For a three-year period, because they've, they've already recommended for next year.
That's what I'm saying, for next, next time that they do meet, that they can, they have an invitation to consider funding all of them for a three-year period. Right now, the board's just approving Westminster for that three-year period and then we'll come back for the second reading.
Correct, correct, that's, that's appropriate. So basically, the motion is to adopt the recommendations in item 45.
Correct, correct. With the provision of having that invitation.
Yeah, I appreciate that. But Paul, do we have any delay in the ability for these organizations like Westminster to get that 150 if we don't do something with the second reading? Does it, because we have to go through another thing, change it, go through two more readings?
No, no, generally speaking, what we do is we will make a formal recommendation, your board will adopt that during the budget process as a contribution, correct?
Okay, so it doesn't delay anything, okay, good.
So there's a motion and a second by Supervisor Long for item 45? And if we could all please vote? And is it okay to just leave item 30 alone or do you need a vote on that?
We can just leave item 30 alone.
Okay, item 30 could just be no action?
Right.
Okay, then let's, we'll go on then to our next time certain items.
What about items two and three, we just bring that back? The appointment of the chair and vice chair.
Yeah, we have to leave items two and three alone because that committee's not created yet. We have nobody to appoint those people to. That commission's not been created.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And we'll then go on to item number 31. This is our time presentation, time certain presentation of a resolution proclaiming National County Government Month. And this is with a theme of serving our veterans, armed forces and their families. And Supervisor Long will be doing this item.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. It is my pleasure to bring this. This is a, an effort nationwide sponsored by NACO to recognize county government and to recognize the good work in county government that, that we do, many times work that isn't done by the private sector, but to recognize it. And this particular celebration is to, as you mentioned, to recognize our veterans, our armed forces, and their families. So I have a resolution on behalf of the board to present to our Human Services Agency with the umbrella over the Veteran Services Agency here in our county, and then to also recognize our veterans, armed forces, and their families. So I'm pleased to have, first, I'm going to invite up, thank you, Linda, Linda Henderson, our Dalton Family Services Director. And I think to receive the resolution on behalf of the HSA, and Marissa Mock, Dalton Family Services Senior Manager, is she with you? I don't know if Carol made it, Carol Shokin, did Carol make it with you?
She didn't make it today.
Okay. And I'm very pleased to have with us as, in recognition of the theme, which is, again, serving our veterans, armed forces, and their families, we have George Lopez, Carlos Lopez, I'm sorry, the father, do I have that straight? And son, no, Carlos is the son, and I've met Carlos, I'm sorry, I know that, and his father, George, United States Marine Corps veteran, currently, George works currently for the county as an assistant in the CEO's HR department. And then his son is Sergeant Carlos Davis Lopez, United States Marine Corps veteran, who was recently honorably discharged after serving five years and nineteen days in the United States Marine Corps. And I invite them up to the dais also. They participated, Sergeant Carlos Dave Lopez participated in several operations in the service in Africa, Middle East, Southeast Asia, relief efforts following the tsunami in Indonesia, and four tours in Iraq. And I'm going to step down with, with the resolution and the certificate for Carlos and ask them to speak, but let me take a moment to read this resolution, parts of this resolution. It certainly is in nineteen sixty-one that the NACO, the National Association of Counties, encouraged counties to recognize our county government services and programs during this month of April. And the National Association urges us to celebrate our workforce and to celebrate the success of all of the programs that we provide to the residents in our counties. And again, this, this month is the recognition of our veteran services. The nation's three thousand and sixty-eight counties provide a variety of essential public services to communities serving over three hundred million Americans. And Ventura County takes seriously our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, welfare, and safety of our residents in a sensible and cost-effective way. And county government delivers many important services to our American veterans, our military service families and members, including their physical and mental health, housing, employment, and justice services. The Human Services Agency recognizes the courageous service of our county's veterans and armed forces and their family members, and we work hard to help them to access benefits from federal, state, and local agency through our Veteran Services Office. The Veteran Service Office includes assistance with claims to the VA for service-connected compensation, pension for wartime veterans with non-service-connected disabilities, California Tuition Fee Waiver Program, memorial benefits, veterans' life insurance, medical referrals and information. And it's through the one-stop-and-career center system that the State Employment Development Department has disabled veterans' outreach program specialists and local veterans' employment representatives that provide services to our veterans and their eligible spouses. Access to a comprehensive range of assistance, including a variety of career workshops, internet job searches, how-to-interview, resumes that sell, all those things that prepare them for the private sector workforce, are importantly run and supported through our Veteran Services. Our county's estimated fifty-two thousand veterans, two thousand eight hundred and thirty-five are currently receiving services through our programs, with approximately fifteen hundred claims filed in oh-nine-ten with a benefit amount of one point three million dollars for our veterans. We're also currently case-managing forty-five veterans in our homeless services and providing three hundred and fifty veterans with employment services. So it really is my pleasure to bring this forward to the board for recognition and to express our appreciation, valuing all members and families of all branches of our military, past and present, in proclaiming this month as National County Government Month, recognizing our veterans, armed forces, and families for their extraordinary services, endeavors, and sacrifices. And I will step down now, I'd ask, I'd ask Linda and our Veteran Service to first add some comments and then invite Carlos and George.
Good morning. My name is Linda Henderson, Deputy Director, Human Services Agency, Ms. Parks, members of the board, and for the first time, it is such a pleasure for me to say, Mr. Powers, County Executive Officer. On behalf of our agency director, Barry Zimmerman, it is really an honor to stand before you and to, on behalf of all of the local service agencies, all the local organizations and agencies, the state agencies and federals with whom we partner, to provide an array of services and access to benefits for our veterans, thank you so much for this time to accept this proclamation. And we are so dedicated to providing extraordinary service to extraordinary people who, to this day, serve our country and serve our country well and bravely. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Anything to, please, George Carlos, you were going to say something?
Well, yeah, we couldn't memorize this, so there's just a couple minutes here. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, welcome Mr. Powers. On behalf of the many families of veterans of Ventura County, I'm sorry, we want to thank the board members for the support and also to thank the Human Service Agency for the services they provide for our brother veterans and their families. Excuse me. First of all, a special thanks to Ms. Kathy Long and Mr. Martine Hernandez for asking my son and I to speak today, and for those, and for their very kind words and well wishes, plus for helping my son with a college matter that he had when he was recalled back to active duty in two thousand and eight. It proved to be very helpful when he returned and continued his studies. Before I turned the podium over to my son, my wife wanted me to express the gratitude to the Human Service Agency for all their assistance during a very trying time, especially knowing that our boy had one of the most dangerous jobs in the Corps. He was a gunner on many territs and went over two hundred missions outside that wire. He also participated, like Ms. Long mentioned, on a humanitarian effort during the earthquake and tsunami in Indonesia. He served from two thousand and two to two thousand and six, and again, in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. In those years, we had many contacts with retired Colonel George Compton, who was the Director of HSA's Veteran Service Offices. We corresponded either by email, by phone, or either in person for many things. He did comfort my wife when she heard about all the services available to our returning vets, especially with Carlos sustaining wounds in combat. We found Colonel Compton's staff very knowledgeable and willing to help the families of our veterans. When I myself came home in the early seventies, most of the veteran services were located in Los Angeles and Santa Barbara, and some in Santa Barbara. However, we did find a veteran's representative at the DED for information and jobs and other benefits. I also want to mention that I met many county employees who also have children and other family members in the armed forces. I hope that they can too, can utilize the many services that the Human Services has to offer. And now I will introduce my youngest son, Sergeant Carlos David Lopez.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It is my esteemed privilege and honor to be in front of the Board of Supervisors and welcome Mr. Powers. On behalf of my veteran brothers, I would like to take this time to thank you for your support and also to thank the Human Service Agency. I want to thank them for the service they provide us upon our return. I would like to thank Ms. Kathy Long for helping me when I was having trouble at Ventura College with a military withdrawal for one of my classes when I was recalled back to active duty in two thousand and eight. I would also like to thank Mr. Martine Hernandez for the spiritual gift which I shared gratefully with my brothers on my fourth tour. In two thousand and six, I also met with a fellow veteran by the name of Colonel George Compton, who was the Director of HSA's Veteran Services. He was very instrumental in guiding me through my medical disability application and other issues I had. In addition, I found his staff very helpful to my needs. Furthermore, I will never forget their generosity of gifts from the Human Service Agency and Assessor's Office, plus other departments of the county of Ventura. It was greatly appreciated by my fellow Marines. Because of the benefits I obtained, I was able to receive an associate's degree in criminal justice in two thousand and ten. I was very glad and proud because, I am very glad and proud because I am a father of two, two children. Right now, I'm in the process of applying for jobs, or maybe job training through the Human Service Agency Job and Career Center in Santa Paula. On behalf of my brothers who are now serving and returning back to the real world, I want to thank you for all your support you have given us. Simple Fidel.
And board members, I'm pleased to present to Carlos a special certificate in appreciation for your service to our country and recognition for pursuing your dream of a higher education on behalf of the board. And to Linda to the department, in recognition of National County Government Month, serving our veterans, armed forces, and their families. Thank you. Thank you. This is my, I'm just standing here with you.
Ready? One, two, three. One, 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 two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Board members?
Carlos, thank you for your service.
Yes, both father and son.
Father and son, thank you so much.
Thank you for your service to the, to our country, a perilous service too. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you also Supervisor Long for bringing this item to the board. And with that, now we'll go to our next time-certain item. This is item thirty-three, and it's a public hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution approving the granting of a private oil pipeline franchise. But first, yes, you'll have to wait a moment for that. We're going to go to our presentation, item thirty-two, on National Public Health Week. And this is a resolution on behalf of the Board of Supervisors recognizing National Public Health Week. And the motto is, "Safety is no accident. Live injury free." And the board proclamation reads that whereas the mission of the Ventura County Public Health Department is to empower the community to promote health and emergency preparedness and prevent disease, injury, and disability, and whereas the week of April fourth through tenth is National Public Health Week, and the theme is, "Safety is no accident. Live injury free." And whereas since ninety-five, the American Public Health Association, through its sponsorship of National Public Health Week, has educated public policymakers and public health professionals about the issues important to improving the public's health. And whereas each year in the United States, nearly one hundred and fifty thousand people die from injuries, and almost thirty million people are injured seriously enough to go to the emergency room, and the financial costs of injuries are staggering, accounting for twelve percent of the annual medical care spending and totaling as much as sixty-nine billion dollars a year just because of accidents and injuries. Whereas injuries, unexpected events, and violence affect people at home, at work, and their communities, on the move, and even at play. And each year in the United States, unintentional injuries such as motor vehicle crashes, poisonings, and burns rank among the top ten causes of death for people between the ages of one and forty-four. Motor vehicle accidents, unintentional overdoses, and falls comprise the most prevalent fatal injuries in Ventura County. And whereas many injuries and associated costs can be proactively prevented by taking actions such as wearing a seatbelt, wearing a helmet, properly installing smoke detector alarms, correctly installing the child's safety seats, storing cleaning supplies in locked cabinets, and educating the community about family and workplace violence, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby proclaims April fourth through tenth two thousand and eleven National Public Health Week in Ventura County. And we call upon the people of Ventura County to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, customers, students, coworkers, and leaders better understand the importance of public health, of the importance of public health, but also to a successful health system in light of this year's theme, "Safety is no accident. Live injury free." And I'll make this presentation to our, Mr. Barry Fisher, our Public Health Director. And Barry, if you'd like to come to Mike, I'll come on down.
Thank you, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. Always looked up to you, and now I'm really looking up to you. I'm, thank you to the board for helping public health recognize National Public Health Week. With some of the conversations that took place this morning, we have such a talented and giving group of employees and seven days a week, some twenty-four hours a day, weekends, you name it. And it is just such an honor to work with such a fine group. Just to mention some of the programs that we have, from health education, we have a community gardens project, to field nursing, emergency medical services, laboratory services, medical therapy units, and some of our elementary schools, California Children's Services, vital records, communicable disease, women, infants, and children, and there are just so many more programs that we give to the citizens of the county. So again, thank you for helping us recognize Public Health Week and, more importantly, take the message out to the citizens of safety. There are just, save, again, safety is no accident. Most, if not all, accidents are preventable, so thank you for helping us with that. And just like to let everyone know that we have a safety fair out in the courtyard with a lot of our public health programs and would welcome you out there, so thank you.
Thank you for coming and accepting this and doing what you do for the public health.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers, the item before you is a public hearing on the adoption of a resolution to grant a franchise for oil pipeline to ABA Energy. If there's no public speakers, or then close the hearing and adopt the resolution. On March first, you adopted the resolution of intention to grant this franchise and this existing oil pipeline franchise in Rice Avenue, currently operated by Vintage Petroleum. This will transfer the operation of that pipeline to ABA Energy. It's about nine hundred feet long and provides about fifteen hundred dollars a year in revenue to the general fund.
Thank you, thank you. And we have a motion, I believe, already. I would open the public hearing and seeing, having no cards, go ahead and close it. We have a motion from Supervisor Foy and a second from Supervisor Zaragosa, if we could all please vote. And then that is approved unanimously. Item thirty-four is a hearing regarding approving of findings for a proposed vacation of Shelf Road.
Again, Keith Folgar, Public Works Real Estate Services. This is a hearing to vacate a portion of Shelf Road. Again, open the public hearing, take any speaker cards or comments, and if there are none, adopt the resolution to vacate the road. The public maintenance of this road was vacated by the Transportation Department in nineteen ninety. Since that time, it's been used as a hiking trail. comments, and if there are none, adopt the resolution to vacate the road. The public maintenance of this road was vacated by the Transportation Department in 1990. Since that time, it's been used as a hiking trail. If you adopt this resolution, the county will vacate the future use of this by road, but reserve a right for public trail purposes. The trail will be operated by the Chief General Services Parks Department, and it's also an emergency access road for fire. The fire department has and will continue to maintain this as emergency access.
Thank you. Go ahead and open the public hearing. Having no cards, I'll close the public hearing. And then we have a motion for Supervisor Bennett, a second by Supervisor Zaragosa. Thank you for your work on this. A public amenity is provided with that trail. Thank you. And that vote is unanimous. Our next item then on our agenda is our 10:30 a.m. time certens, beginning with Item 35, which is a public hearing regarding the adoption of a resolution approving adjustments to water rates, also known as the infamous Moore Park Water Rates, I believe. And with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and turn it over to Mr. Pacala.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. Ready Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the County Public Works Agency. This is a public hearing for the proposed water rate increase and tiered allocation adjustments for Ventura County Water Work District Number One. As you're aware, District provides water and sanitation services to the city of Moore Park and areas to the north and west of the city. I have a short presentation, just to give you an overview of where we started, where we are today. In response to a 10% imported water rate increase from Callejas Municipal Water District, we recommended a 10% rate increase to our customers on December 14th. At that time, we received 32 protest letters from our customers. Your Board Director, the staff rejected our recommendation and asked us to come back with consequences. What consequences would this have on our district? Back in January 25th, we came back to your Board. At that time, we invited Metropolitan Water District and Callejas to come in front of your Board and explain to you why their rates have been going up, and you heard their presentation. Following that, I made a presentation to show you that if there's no rate increase, we may have to go to water rationing. At that time, your Board directed us to come back in two weeks to come up with other alternates like water rate increases and allocation adjustments. And on January 27th, we scheduled a special advisory committee meeting, and then at that time, we discussed several options. And then on February 8th, we came back to your Board with five different scenarios, and your Board directed staff to proceed with Scenario B, which is in front of you today. And these were the different scenarios that we presented. This is a summary of the sheet that I took from February 8th presentation, and B1 is what you're considering today. To comply with the Proposition 218 legal requirements, we sent a fortified notice out. And as, on February 17th, as of today, your clerk of your Board received 14 protest letters, which have been included in your staff, in our staff report. And our office in Moore Park received 14 telephone calls regarding these adjustments to the rates, allocations, and the rate increases. Most of these calls were to inquire about what it means to them, how their water rates would be impacted. There were one customer very upset about the rate increase. And as far as this protest letters, there's one letter from the city of Moore Park. They are supporting the 12% rate increase, but they are suggesting that allocations be postponed until October. And if we were to postpone the allocation adjustments, that means by the end of this fiscal year, there'll be a negative fund balance for this district. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you for that. I actually do have one card. If the Board would like to first have our speakers, David Schwabauer, would you like to come speak?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Mr. Powers. It's a pleasure to be here. This is, I'm sort of losing track of the number of times that we've been discussing this issue, but I just wanted to give some remarks and be in support of what's before you. The advisory committee, which I sit on, takes this not lightly, and you know that. And I think it's very important that we move forward. I know there are concerns about the timing with regards to adjustments, and Ready has already elaborated on that. But I think with the challenges that we face, we need to move forward. Just one other remark, sort of from the 30,000-foot level, if you will. As many of you know, the Governor has said that we are out of a drought. In my humble opinion, I would disagree. I know that we've had two years of high rainfall and snowfall within the Sierra and with the mountains, where we get a lot of our water. But we are facing tremendous challenges with regards to use. The state system is still not able to put the total flow through the state water project. All of those are issues that are still complicating our world. So as a person who lives in Southern California, as a person who works in Southern California and relies on all of these different water supplies, we need to be very mindful and vigilant, and always keep it to the forefront, that we need to do the very best we can now to plan for the future. And I really do believe that the rates that we're talking about implementing here help to do that. It's sometimes challenging, all of you know that, there are times when there are difficult votes, or challenging votes. And I thank you for your time on this, because this is one of those times. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming at least three times, and considering you're this nice volunteer panel. Appreciate you taking your time. Supervisor Foye, did you want to make any comments?
Yeah, I will make a motion, Tom. And I do appreciate all the hard work, and it's great to see the Governor saying that. But I think you're right, because the drought is not only the water that comes down, it's how we get the water, which is very difficult. There's one letter here from the Moore Park Country Club, which I thought was pretty tough. And it's interesting, because the Terra Hada Country Club Golf Course there, I think when they opened, were spending about $30,000 or $40,000 a year in water. Now they're spending $400,000 a year in water. Pretty much going to put them out of business. And it's difficult. I mean, it's difficult, you can't have grass in your golf and all the other things. So the water issue is still a crisis, but I do appreciate the hard work. And also, Moore Park wanted a six-month delay in the tiering so they could, what, explain it to their citizens. And I think you're going to do a pretty good job of communicating all this to them. But the problem with that is it put you in that negative balance, which then I think you'd be in January with probably a 20% or 30% increase to do it. So I think that's not. And I think you've come up with a good way to try to, like David said, encourage as much conservation as possible through this system. So I appreciate. So I'll make a motion. Thank you.
And we have a motion from Supervisor Foye, and we have, I know we also have a comment from Supervisor Long.
Just a comment that I expect the golf courses are all going to, using recycled water and doing all those things they can and should, and frankly, changing some of the design of the courses so that they're more desert-like.
More desert-like courses.
And they should charge bad golfers more money.
Yeah, so those bad goes, they got to use to fix mine after I golf there.
This is always tough, and it's not going to get easier. There is not a resolution to the very difficult state water policy matters that are in front of the state. And until we get there, we're going to be at the bad end of the stick.
And I think on this one golf course, Ready uses reclaimed water, don't you, Ready?
Yes, that's what I wanted to comment, and they do use reclaimed water from Water Work District One.
And you charged them 10% less, and they're still struggling through it.
And from some of my discussions with MWD folk, who are the ones that, you know, start this rate where it begins and ends up with us, I'd like to stick the Ventura County Taxpayers Association on them.
Yeah, there you go.
And if we have a unanimous vote on that one, and that's, now Mr. Pacala can do something else. Item 10, our next 10:30 item is Item 36, and our...
We'll take a five-minute break after this?
Yes, we'll take a five-minute break after this. Our friendly treasurer tax collector has been patiently awaiting this moment, I think. And Mr. Hanson.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Powers-to-be. Oh, I was supposed to do, I saw the movie. Did I do this right? Okay. What a great movie. And this is my 200th board letter, so I still think I'm ahead of you, Christine, but, no? Okay, I'll keep writing. Two and a half years since the Fed lowered interest rates, and really no hope for any increase according to the futures market and the probability indexes. Looks like January of '12, there would be a 52% chance. So doesn't look like much. We're still maintaining what I think is a fair yield, and we're still keeping a margin ahead of life, which is not our goal, but it's always nice. The economy's coming along slowly but surely. This is, we had a tremendous drop. It's going to take a while. There's going to be little blips. Now the big thing is oil. When I wrote this letter, you see it's 80 to 100 bucks. It's now 108. And I drive from Santa Barbara every day, so I'm acutely aware of how it goes up and down. There, I didn't bring my board letter, but the matrix that I do on the GA summary, where it breaks down how many home loans and Fannie Mae's farm credits. By the end of April, your, the pleasure of the Board was to try to even it out, even though they're all federal agencies enacted by Congress, to kind of even out the tanks. And of course, it's a slow process, because farm credit is an agricultural agency, and they really don't need the monies. But I would think by the end of April, we should be getting close to the 400 million mark. So that'll even it out, at least from not being so heavy in home loan. But once again, they are all government agencies. Home loan alone, LA County must own. My good friend Tony Mason, three to four billion alone. So they're agencies of the government, and the government helped private companies. So I can't imagine that if there's a problem, that they wouldn't intervene. So I don't lose any sleep about that at night. Other than that, that's pretty much all the comments I have, unless you have any questions.
Just got one question. I know I ask you this often, but, and I always ask you how much money you made us. But why I ask you that is because you are, you know, you present the, probably the safest portfolio, and I've seen ratings, rankings in our county. We're probably the safest in the country. But also, at the other side, we have some of the highest returns comparative. So I mean, it's one of those things, you can't have both, but we seem to have both, and I think that's tremendous. But, and why I ask you how much money you made is because, because of that, we have been able to have a lot more revenues than other counties and other cities would have, in our school districts and everybody else invests with us. So I don't know if you ever really know how much difference there is between what we've made over those years.
Well, you've asked me a couple times. So Bertha and I ran the numbers. And by the way, Ty Ralston's here, one of my fine associates, kind of my blindside, people that do an awful lot of work under a lot of pressure. Just the board letter, to get all that information and have it balanced to the penny, is a huge job. And so I'd like to recognize Ty this morning. So I finally ran the numbers, and if you include this board letter, I've made $730 million since I came to the county in 1994.
Wow, wow. I mean, and you look at that, you could have done like the other people done, and that number might have only been 300 million or 200 million. So I applaud you on using the taxpayer dollars to the best benefit you could and for all of us. So thank you very much.
And I'm happy for the county, but I'm also happy for the other half of the portfolio, which is schools. Hopefully, more books and pencils, and everything else.
Supervisor Zaragosa?
Just, I want to thank you for putting in that one paragraph in the first page. It says, "The economy is continuing to improve modestly." And we need those positive notes, you know. Isn't the unemployment now 8.9? I think you had nine.
Yeah, this is a month old, so.
So now, we dropped it a little bit, so.
It's a big, it was a big move we had, so it's not going to take any instant move. But, but the trend, and the phrase in the business is, "Let the trend be your friend." The trend is better now. And consumer confidence is better.
And I think it's important, too, that the public understand that, that it's gradually getting better, you know.
Durable goods orders are up, so people are buying more appliances and things like that. And so slowly but surely, this is happening. A million jobs have been created already.
That's exactly right. So I think, I think that's important, you know, I just wanted to point that out, and thank you for your good work.
And it's also a very good time, I think, to buy a home, if you can afford it.
Absolutely.
My son, who's in banking, just refinanced his house, because we feel these rates are historically low, and it's a good opportunity.
I was in the business too, so I agree with you. It's a good time to buy a house.
Supervisor Bennett?
Appreciate the good work, as always, that we're getting from you, Mr. Hanson. Before we lose you from the podium, I just thought I'd like to ask you to give us an update. I was at the VASERA meeting yesterday. You had a subcommittee meeting about hiring new executive director for VASERA. Could you give us a report from the subcommittee in terms of where we are in the process? I know you're voted by the employees, represents the general employees, so it's sort of appropriate for the general employees to sort of hear also.
And I'm very, I'm thankful you asked that question, because I, that was, I slept pretty good on that part of the day. But the Board will recall that VASERA voted 6 to 3 to have the county do the recruitment. I think it should have been 9 to 0, but whatever. Yesterday, we looked at 24 candidates, the subcommittee, and we looked at 24 applications.
Oh, because I heard when I was there that there wasn't going to be anybody willing to apply.
Oh, right. I remember that comment, too, that we wouldn't be able to do it, and there wouldn't be any candidates. I feel beyond any question of a doubt, the nine that we are referring to the Board to interview, all of whom, to a certain extent, could do the job. There are a couple that, if there weren't going to be an oral interview, and our Board will interview each candidate in person, I would have just hired by reading their resume. Because I was Global Sales Manager, so I've done this for a long time. They just really look good. So I am very happy to announce Supervisor Bennett, you and I, and Judge will be interviewing at least, well, unless somebody can't make it or they've taken a previous job, possibly up to nine candidates.
Okay, good.
And they all, they all, I was just very happy. And I want to say thank you to John Nicole, who at certain points, it was kind of an adverse relationship-type meeting, and to Kelly Shirck and Elisa Yoshimura, who have done a lights-out job. And there were the three that thought that the county couldn't do it. They've not only done a fantastic job, they came in, Supervisor Foye, with several candidates that were outstanding. So good job to the county HR.
Thanks for the update. Appreciate it.
And if you didn't see this movie, The King's Speech, it's one of the best movies. I go to one movie a year. My wife picks a real good one. It was great.
Have you bought stock in that?
What?
I was asking if you bought stock in that movie. All right. Thank you for your presentation. Item 36 needs a receiving file. We have a motion by Supervisor Long, a second by Supervisor Foye, and a unanimous vote. Thank you for your presentation. Always interesting. And now we'll take a quick 10-minute break and be back here for our regular agenda. I am sorry to keep you waiting. And now, we'll take a quick 10-minute break and be back here for our regular agenda. I am sorry to keep you waiting. Thank you. Sorry to keep you so long. Good work getting that completed. Our next item on the agenda is item 43, and this is regarding a ratification with the city of Camarillo for some programs at their library, the Read program. We have Mr... Ms. Griffin?
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board of Supervisors. Morning, Mr. Powers. I'm Jackie Griffin, the Director of the Ventura County Library, and I'd like to introduce you to Carol Chapman, the head of the Project Read, the literacy program for Ventura County. She manages a program which is run almost entirely by volunteers, except for Carol and a few other clerical staff, which teaches 250 people a year to read in Ventura County. It's an extraordinary program that returns a lot of people to effective employment and as taxpayers and as good parents. And this morning, we're here because the city of Camarillo has, as you know, withdrawn from the Ventura County Library System and set up their own library, but they do not have a active literacy program, and they asked to contract with us.
Do you want to say anything around this?
I'm really glad that they saw the value in the program and are willing to support it, and it's going to give some more stability to our program overall, and that's a real benefit.
And we benefit from the revenue.
I'd move the recommended action. It is a valuable program. It's incredible what your good volunteers can do for so many with so few dollars, frankly. And I have a team for the Rotary trivia event. I'm there. It's important to our literacy programs.
Thank you. Supervisor Long has made the motion, second by Supervisor Bennett. If we could all please vote? Excellent. Glad to see that program continue. Thank you for your good work on it.
Thank you.
And it is nice that the city recognizes the benefit of that. And our next item is also with Ms. Griffin, and this is regarding the MOU to withdraw from the library system. Or, I guess it would be give notice to withdraw to the cities.
Yes. I know that you're busy this morning, but I do want to take just a few minutes to quickly summarize. The Ventura County Library System was a, what would be a California traditional model of a library system through the... Until the 1998, which would mean that the department reported to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors governed the library. In 1998, when financial difficulties faced the county, and there was a need to cut hours at the libraries around the county, it created a fair amount of distrust and unhappiness, and the library system was reorganized into an MOU, which governed the library for 13 years. It involved each of the seven cities at that time that were part of the library system. Each of them had one vote on the commission from a city councilperson plus a member of the Board of Supervisors, currently Kathy Long. And that operated the library system for 13 years. There were some real flaws in the MOU, the way the funding worked, the way expenses are allocated, and the fact that the MOU could only be changed by unanimous vote of the commission, which, when you're talking about seven cities in a county, it became impossible, basically, to do any changes to the MOU. Last year, Camarillo suggested that they might wish to leave and establish their own library because of the inequities of the format of the MOU, which meant that as their circulation increased, they began to be responsible for a larger part of the expenses in the system. They went from being responsible for about 22% to about 28% of the system, and it was a hefty hike for a city that's medium size in the system. The members of the city council, the city managers from each city, Supervisor Long, then-CEO Marty Robinson, myself, and two other members of the commission, Kevin Kildie from the city of Camarillo, and Michelle Foster from Simi Valley, met together for over a year discussing ways that we could alter the MOU that would be satisfactory to all the members and that would clear up the inequity created when somebody builds a new library. We went through, I think, approximately 18 possible scenarios. None of them worked. It became clear at some point that in order to move on and to stabilize, the best option would be to move back to a county library system. At last month's commission meeting, the commissioners asked Supervisor Long and myself to bring this item to the Board of Supervisors, where... In which we would move out of the MOU. This seems to be the cleanest and most straightforward way to do it. We would move out of the MOU. The state law requires us to provide library service to any city that wishes to have it, as long as they're willing to pay for it. So, those members that did not wish to leave will simply come along with us. There was a unanimous vote of the five members that were present at the board, at the commission meeting, to move this forward. And then, I would like to take questions, if we have any.
I do have one public... Or two public speaker cards, actually. Laura Golovson, followed by Carol Lindberg.
Thank you. My name is Laura Golovson. This is my library file, which unfortunately, I have never been able to use when we asked for the grand jury for an investigation on the illegal, possibly closing of right. Only the county people, and I guess Mr. Fulton, were called. None of us. So, we followed the letter to the law that it said be brief. And when we are calling you to come and give your say, you can bring your evidence, your files and things, but it didn't happen. My husband calls me the truth fairy. But Mrs. Griffith's... Ms. Griffith's solution sounds good, but if it was tried 13 years ago and it didn't work then, why is it going to work now? I don't see any real difference in it. Then, we went to the MOU, and evidently, that didn't work. But blaming the MOU on why Camarillo withdrew from the system really isn't fair. Camarillo states, and there's newspapers' articles in here, that the reason they withdrew from the system, partly at least, was the high overhead cost of the Ventura County Library System. They weren't getting a lot of cluck for their buck. There is no cap, as far as I know, on the administrative costs. So, now, I'm wondering, where is the money coming from, since a third of that was supplied by Camarillo? I don't think just Ventura and Simi will be able to fill the gap. And I'm wondering, has the administrative and support staff, have they cut equally then? If we have lost 30%, have they cut 30% of their staff and support? The only thing I've heard about is one part-time payroll clerk losing her job. When Helen Power Wright was closed, it was said by Ms. Griffin and Bill Fulton that there was simply no money available, and a lot of people bought that. Even though by the MOU, we were entitled to 40 hours, we would have been happy to compromise and had 20 hours, two to six places kids could go after school, and nothing on the weekend because the college swap meet really makes that unhappy. And the Ventura City Library Commission's number-one recommendation was keep Foster and Wright open and reduce the hours at both. But again, no money. Well, I really read then with interest that the county was going to give $190,000 to the unincorporated areas of Thousand Oaks for library service. So, I got wondering, how many people was that going to serve? And finally found out that, A, it wasn't $190,000. That was a mistake. It was $330,000, which they've done for two years, comes to $660,000. And the number of people it serves is 7,500 tops. So, 7,500 people in the unincorporated area get $660,000. Yet, I was glad to hear Supervisor Long say that what we're here for is to give good community service. But that leaves 70,000 of us on the East End with really inadequate library services because our library is gone. So, I would oppose this proposal. The Ventura City, in June, will have a report on library services. And I think what is needed is an independent investigation of the Ventura County Library Services. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, and our next speaker then is Ms. Lindberg. Welcome.
Good morning. Hi. My name is Carol Lindberg, and I'm from Ventura, speaking for myself, but I have laryngitis, so I'm not speaking too well this morning. But I'll be brief. As Laura said, Ventura is just beginning an expensive review of the current operating system of its libraries. We hope to have an impartial report from our consultants in regard to how the county system is accommodating Ventura and what new methods of operation are available for our consideration. And before you approve this method of operation from 1998, I just have some questions and comments. One, if all of the Ventura City's taxes for libraries are given to the county, what if any control or input will our city have in designing budget priorities for our city libraries? Two, and before this document is approved, I'd like some assurance that Ventura will have some control over our property taxes for libraries and how they're allocated. Three, will library personnel's salaries and benefits be set and approved by the Board of Supervisors? And will there be an oversight committee to evaluate the compensation and budget requests? Four, will there be opportunities for the public to question compensation, benefits, and equipment, book purchases? And five, will Ventura have input on its hours, the hours that its libraries remain open in staffing and selection of books and equipment? If so, can you refer me to the policy that states those items? And I just... One last comment. This request for action by the Board of Supervisors is rather quick. I just wasn't... Didn't seem to me that there was a lot of time for public input, but I did hear about it, and I appreciate your time very much, and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you for sticking around as long as you had to for this item. Ms. Griffin, did you want to make some comments?
First of all, I'm thankful for the opportunity to say a couple things. The first is, earlier this year, on the request of the CEO's office, an independent study was done on Ventura County Library's management and administration of the library, particularly the non-public services, the support services, the catalog, the books, IT staff. And what came through clearly is that we run a remarkably lean library system, much... About 30% less staffing than any other library our size in the state, and an equivalent reduction in salary for that amount. Second of all, I thought Ms. Lindberg asked some really good questions, and I don't remember all of them, but... And so, somebody will help me, because I really have forgotten several of them.
City of Ventura Oversight?
Yes. We have told the cities that we will tie hours into the property tax. Since about 80% of our funding comes straight from property tax, we will tie any changes in hours into fluctuations in those. We see going forward that we can remain fairly stable if the property tax stays stable, at least for the next few years. Cities such as Ojai and Port Wenyame and Fillmore that are paying for some additional hours, we will probably have to negotiate and talk with them over the next year or so about increasing those dollars because they haven't done that for several years. The city of Ventura has a library advisory commission. We don't see any reason why that wouldn't continue, and we would not continue to work with them just as with them just as we have now. When we have money to spend, we go to them, we ask them for recommendations, and we try to follow those recommendations. We will still be reporting, and certainly the Board of Supervisors will be doing oversight of the library, I would imagine, with a careful, careful eye. Did that answer anyone's question? Okay. And others?
I was wondering if it was accurate regarding the payments to the City of Thousand Oaks, that there were two payments, I thought there was just one.
Well, in fact, the City of Thousand, the library system had been for over 20 years paying the City of Thousand Oaks for the unincorporated areas of their library. Over time, the Library Commission and the Board of Supervisors changed their philosophy on that. When Moore Park left, they received no unincorporated dollars. When Camarillo left, they received no unincorporated dollars. And the Library Commission, two years ago, decided that it was no longer appropriate to do that. We had built the Oak Park Library out there, and the Camarillo Library was close by. So we brought that motion to the Board of Supervisors, who decided that there was, should be a transition period, and for two years, provided that money to the City of Thousand Oaks, and just recently have ended that agreement. But the, just briefly on Wright Library, just to summarize, the City of Ventura has operated three libraries for many years. One with federal funds from CDBG grants, Wright and Foster from their property tax, and from a great deal of money from the unincorporated areas over the last several years. The other cities in the library system were happy to do that, when there was enough funding to do that. When funding became too tight to do that, and in order to continue to operate both libraries in Ventura, the other cities and the county asked Ventura to please take on responsibility for covering the amount of funding that was not available, although we continued to pay them their service area of unincorporated dollars, which comes to about a quarter of a million a year. The City of Ventura undertook, first, city council examined it and decided they did not have the money, and then they took it out for a tax measure, and that tax measure failed, although it was closer than I had thought it might be, but it did fail, and we were left with no options except to run one library. The idea of running two libraries with reduced salaries would not have saved an adequate amount of money. We would have liked to have kept Wright Library, no librarian, and no Board of Supervisors, or the Library Commission wants to close libraries. The City of Ventura simply could not fund it.
And I know Supervisor Long had a comment or question, too?
Well, just, I have some comments to make. The question was asked, why will this work now? And I think you've covered some of it. Some of it goes back, as Jackie so well put in the board letter, to a time when there was a lack of trust by the cities of the library operational model and the administrator, and hence the Confederacy was formed with the commission. And it's served us well for these last 12, 13 years, since 98. It has served us well. It's been quite a challenge, I think, for the staff of the library system, which has always been lean, and is even leaner than it was, is today than it was then, and monitoring, and tracking, and assuring everyone that their return to source truly was applied well. And I think all of the library staff, past and present, for all of that due diligence. And I think that the reason it's changed now is a variety of things. Truly, the economy has impacted all of us, and the property taxes going down has impacted, and the state has taken every single penny that ever was, from 98 forward, and that's impacted the system. The system was underfunded in 98, it's underfunded today. And the board has been briefed on this. We stepped up to the plate to assist with that, with direct general fund dollars. We have taken on, I think, the support of the system in a variety of ways indirectly, with CEO staff and others, to help get us through this time. And when the commission took the action and asked me to bring this forward with the library director, it was with clear recognition, acknowledgement of both the work that was done, to try to find a better way, a better model, and to finally just say, the best model is to go back to a centralized system. We have done things in this system that the director and the staff have done wonderful things, in bringing new technologies onboard that have been, brought efficiencies, and supporting the Friends of the Library groups, so they are out doing wonderful, good work, as Camarillo demonstrated with their $500,000 check to their library system. And to streamline a very lean system. So it's operating, I think, at an optimal efficiency, and I expect the director will continue to look for other ways to improve that, because the monies are not going to come from the state. And right now, certainly, the taxpayers aren't, it's not on the top priority list for taxpayers to look, step up, and put some monies into it. And we all believe firmly in free libraries, and to be able to keep the doors open, and I think the work that the director has done with the cities, who are still part of the commission, to say, you know, we will have an ongoing relationship. There will be, the trust will be there. It will be very transparent in how your dollars are being used and tracked, and we will continue to look for ways to improve efficiencies. And I know the supervisor has some, you know, some ways that she wants to explore, in looking at private sector support. So I think we've gone from what was a lack of trust, to what is now certainly more understanding and more trust of how this library system works, and how a centralized library system will work even better, to keep the doors open that we have today, and the hours we have today, and to, again, make it a free library system. So I strongly support the action I did at the commission meeting. It was unanimous vote in support of sunsetting this MOU and moving forward. That's my motion on the floor.
Supervisor, did you have a comment?
I'd like to offer just a couple of quick comments. I'm going to support the motion. The Confederacy was broken. It clearly was not working. Maybe when it was set up, it was.
Whoa.
And the power system's broken also.
My power was kind of saved money.
Now, that's kind of exciting.
So supporting this doesn't mean that I think this is the only way we can do it, or this is even the best way that we can do it, but it is the way we have to return to from the Confederacy. And if we find something better down the road, I'm certainly open to looking at some other setups. And I know that Supervisor Parks brought this issue up a little while ago, saying we need to keep, need to keep asking questions about how to do this, because we're going to stay in a funding crisis for a long time. The state is, you know, has, you know, just literally, you know, completely, you know, turned their backs on the obligation for public libraries. We're going to be in a state of crisis. So is this better than the Confederacy? Yes. Is this the best system? There's always, there's room for us to go someplace else, but I think this is where we have to go, have to go at this point in time, because Confederacy system, obviously, clearly was falling apart.
And if I could just, one thing I should have highlighted for you, is that 13 years ago, when the MOU was created, it was very much in the way that the libraries were operating, as 14 little separate libraries, each doing their own thing. We share everything now. We move 40-some thousand items back and forth between branches every month. We share our databases. And the other thing is, no city is self-supporting their library anymore. Each, every city is being funded at least 20% by the unincorporated areas and the County General Fund money. So there is no return-to-source model there. And you're right, there may be some better things coming down the road, but this is a good interim step.
And I think there has to be a recognition that while the state has completely cut, you know, their funding and their responsibility, the county has continued to step up, put money into the system for the benefit of everybody, not just the unincorporated area. The county put money up to help the City of Ventura, to help all of these other cities. So I think it is, just to make sure everybody understands, because there has been a reasonable commitment on the part of the county to try to do what we can for libraries, when there are lots of other demands for that money, certainly, and we've been consistent with that.
The state gave $1.2 million to the Ventura County Library System in 2000. This year, we will, this coming fiscal year, we will probably get about $60,000. That's, that's the decline, it's over 90%.
1.2 million down to 60,000?
1.2 down to about 60,000, if what they're saying they're going to do is correct. It could be nothing.
I mean, it's understandable, and in that kind of environment, we're going to have challenges, we're going to have tough decisions, we're going to have, you know, no one, none of us, happy with the decisions that we have, or the results that we have.
I actually, I truly believe this is going to be both seamless for the public, and allow us to be even more innovative. And we've tried really hard to be innovative, and I think this is going to give us some more flexibility to do that. And we have managed to have our circulation increase, our hours stay stable while we have declining funding. And I think, I'm really proud of the people that work in library, they've done amazing work.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think one of the, Jen, one of the important things that you mentioned in your report is that the staffing level will not increase under this proposal.
Right.
And also that the service to the public will essentially remain the same, or probably better under this.
This has been our philosophy all the way through. I know Ms. Golovson had some things to say about staffing, but all of our staffing cuts that were not direct, the library, Camarillo leaving, so those, we have had no public service cuts. All of our cuts have come from either administrative staff or other support staff. And we are running really, really thin there. But our hours depend on having staffing, and we have kept it where we needed it, to keep the hours going.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, supervisors. And I do think this is a somewhat streamlined model, you know, and it will free staff to be able to do some other items besides trying to do the separate accounting. But I also will be bringing back in the future, an item to look at how we can, kind of a new business model for libraries, and as it was indicated, incorporate a private sector. And I think there are some opportunities and examples out there that we can look at. So at this point, then, if there are no further comments, we give.
I'd like to thank Laura and Carol. You talk about patient supporters of the library. They have been, I mean, their whole lives, ever since I got involved in politics, this has been a real passion for them, and I appreciate their patience.
Do you know that Carol Lindberg was the Woman of the Year for the 35th Assembly District, nominated by House Williams? Well-deserved honor, and a lot stems from her work and library.
With the library. So let's.
I'm sorry, I'm a fake, but I think it's nice to recognize.
Congratulations.
Let's try to have all of us that are patient about the libraries, keep putting our energies, move forward, and see what we can come up with here. Thank you very much.
And of course, you know, these are just really limited financial times, and that's really what's causing, you know, this huge, huge pressure on our libraries, unfortunately. So with that, if we could have a, I guess, do we need a voice vote? Because our system seems to be down here electronically, so.
Does our motion include something about Carol and her nomination?
Okay.
So I'd made the motion, and.
I need a second.
So we'll go ahead, and we have a motion from Supervisor Long, a second from Supervisor Foy. Is there any objection to the motion?
What an old-fashioned way to vote.
And I'm doing it slowly, so we can keep up with, those computers can keep up with us.
Whoa, look at that.
Hey.
Thank you very much.
It's magic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that concludes item number 44, and we'll go on to our next item, which I believe is item 47. And this is a approval for the purchasing agent to sign an amendment to an increase through June for Mr. Varela's program.
Is it afternoon or morning?
Almost.
Oh, still good morning. Good morning. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Powers. I'm here for two reasons, actually, to recommend that you, this board approve and authorize the county's purchasing agent to sign an amendment to increase the not-to-exceed amount of a contract with Behavioral Interventions Incorporated, from $210,000 to $270,000. And that would be for this fiscal year. Second recommendation is to authorize the purchasing agent to extend the same contract for two additional one-year periods for fiscal years 11, 12, and 12 and 13, pending the approval of future funding by your board. You have the board letter, which contains the information. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? I know that this is going to be helpful as the state moves to release more of their constituents on us, their prisoners.
We've been supervising juveniles on electronic monitoring for years. We've just started dabbling in the adult arena with our pre-trial supervised release program. But yes, as the technology is now shifting to GPS, this will enable us to switch out and use GPS as the preferred method of monitoring offenders.
And that will be more effective in terms of being able to monitor, and then also being able to save some funds in the long run.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request. See no objection? Then this item is also unanimously approved. The next item.
Thank you.
Thank you, is item 48. And this is with our Public Works Agency regarding VCMC replacement. Good morning.
Good afternoon. I think it's afternoon, just about. Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Phil Nelson, I'm with the Public Works Agency. This item pertains to a contract with a firm named RG Group Global, to provide staff augmentation project management services on the VCMC replacement hospital project. There are three items that we're asking your board to consider. The first two are to confirm prior actions or contract actions that we took, deputy purchasing agent in the Public Works Agency, to authorize an initial contract, once we selected RG Group in October, following a qualification-based selection process. Because of the timeline on the project, we wanted to get them started right away. The second action was a modification, raising the contract authority limit to 100,000. That was following your board's approval of the project. Both those actions were done in accordance with your board's resolution on professional services contracting. Since that time, we finished our negotiations with RG Group in terms of the entire scope that's needed for their services from the beginning through award of a design-build contract, and have negotiated a fee. And so we're also, the third item we're asking for is approval for that modification to the contract, so that we can go ahead and move forward and continue the work that we've already started. And I can take any questions at this time.
Okay, that's great. Thank you for the report. Are there any questions on this item?
Tell me a little bit, the modification of the design-build contract, what services are we going to get from them?
It's actually not the design-build contract, but it is staff that provides expertise on design-build, hospital construction, the workings we have to do with OSHPOD, the different highly specific things that go into a project like this, that we just really don't have in the staff, they're assisting us with all of that.
Yeah, I didn't mean to say the design-build contract, but these are people that are advising us on how to do a design-build contract.
Advising and doing much of the work. The preparation of the requests for proposals is quite an arduous task, and so we have people helping us with that. They're helping in managing the budget, the schedule, the programming, kind of pulling all the parts and pieces together, working on a relationship with OSHPOD and MOU to expedite the review. So all of those different things that go into a successful project, they're either advising us or actually doing some of the work for us. Thank you.
Okay. With that, do we have a motion to approve?
Move the recommended action.
Second.
Here we have a motion and a second. See no objections? That passes.
Thank you very much.
Go on to item 49.
Make a motion that we reappoint Rose Grossman, Max Vanderweck, to the Area Agency on Aging Advisory Council.
Second.
Please vote, there's nothing to vote on.
Come on. Come on, try it.
I am, I can vote over here.
See no objections? That item passes, and then on to item 50.
On number 50. On number 50, I would like to pull that, and we'll bring that back later.
Okay, so, do you just want to pull it, and we just won't vote on it then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Is Charles Schwab are the same, that's different than Dave?
It's his dad.
Okay, and then we just have our correspondence agenda?
Motion. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Long, followed by Supervisor, second by Supervisor Foy. See no objections? That passes.
Her voice can't tell her.
How about we do board comments when we come back for our 1:30? Does that sound okay? All right, so we're going to go back, we're going to go into closed session and be back here at 1:30. we'll be looking at our item on redistricting, and I believe Mr. Stevens has the staff report on that.
Sure. Madam Chair, Board members, so we're here today this afternoon to present the supervisory redistricting work program. As you know, by, per the Elections Code, after the decennial census, the state law requires your board to conduct a redistricting program, adjusting boundaries, supervisory boundaries based on that census. Our office has asked the Resource Management Agency to lead this program for two primary reasons. One, they are the designated Census Data Affiliate Center, and they also have experience doing this and have done so in the past. So with that, I'll ask Agency Director Mr. Stevens, he's going to present a PowerPoint to you today, and after that, we'll ask for input and direction from your board. Thank you.
All right, good afternoon, Chair Parks, members of the Board, Mr. Powers. For the record, I'm Chris Stevens with the Resource Management Agency, and as the CEO mentioned, we've been tasked with doing the technical work associated with the redistricting program, supervisory redistricting program. We prepared a PowerPoint for the board, and an important element of the whole program, of course, is kind of public information, public outreach, and so we are kind of starting at the very beginning. Hopefully, it's not too rudimentary for the board, but we wanted to kind of give everyone that same foundation, and so we'll, the first part of the presentation is going to be pretty basic, but bear with us, and we'll get into some more of the technical issues. The, today, we're going to overview the program itself, talk a little bit about the State Elections Code and the Federal Voting Rights Act, and talk about the mandated schedules therein, and then, at the end, talk about a recommended kind of program and process and schedule for the redistricting program. First, talk a little bit about what is redistricting, and that is really the redrawing and adjusting of the electoral district boundaries, and I think it's important to talk about what it's not. What is not in front of the board today are congressional or state office boundaries. We're not associated with the redistricting commission that is going on at the state. This is a wholly separate effort. Another question that comes up from folks when I mention to them about this is why are we doing this? And the simple answer is that we're doing this to account for population shifts that occur over the previous decade, to ensure that we have the equal representation that, you know, this country basically was founded upon. And why now? And the reason this is before the board today is that the 2010 census was completed, the data has been made available, and so we have that information that allows us to make the adjustments, and secondly, and importantly, state law requires that the board do this. When does it have to be done? The State Elections Code requires that this be completed by November 1 of this year. That is, I'll say, the hard and fast deadline within the Elections Code. There are some provisos and qualifications on that, we'll talk about that a little later, but the one hard and fast deadline within that code is November 1. Who makes the final decision? In this case, for the supervisory district boundaries adjustments, it is the responsibility of the board supervisors to take that action and adopt the new district boundaries for Ventura County. The Elections Code does, however, have a little fail-safe, and that is if the board does not take inaction by the required deadline, that a supervisory redistricting commission is immediately formed to take on the task, and the commission has designated members. The code identifies the district attorney as being the chairperson of such a commission, and the other members are the county assessor and the county elections official, and if it were to get to that point, they would have to take the action by December 30. That has never occurred in Ventura County. I'm not sure if it's occurred anywhere within the state, but in any event, I thought I would just cover all the bases. Now to the State Elections Code. The language within the code to guide you is, as you can see, fairly broad, that the district shall be as nearly equal in population as may be. There are no numeric targets, and I think that this is a recognition of the many factors that the board has to consider, and in fact, from a mathematical standpoint, the likely impossibility of having logical boundaries that were exactly equal with one another. To give the board some idea of how things have gone in the past, how that nearly as equal as may be has been translated into specific numbers in the past, this is the district populations following the 1991 redistricting, and you can see that they got within 1%, 0.86% to be exact.
So that 1% is not required?
That's correct. Yeah, there's nothing in the code that requires we be within 1%.
So nearly as, could be 5%, 10%?
Well, I may defer to county council on that one.
No, can't be 10%.
No, I think it's a very good question.
It's under the impression, and it was from 2000, that it had to be within 1%?
That's a little thump.
1% comes from a California Supreme Court case dealing with statewide districting,
We'll return back from our closed session to the April 5, 2011 board meeting, and
and basically, as nearly as can be is the test, and if you had a very good reason, a new city or something that kicked one out, more than that, it might be upheld, but I've not seen any cases recently upheld that are more than 1% in California for counties or statewide, because with modern technology and the number crunching, it's very easy to keep it under 1%. More than 1%, if you had a justification, might be upheld, but that's not where the cases are tending.
And I might point out, this is 1991 redistricting. Supervisor Foy didn't represent, Parks didn't, you know, none of us were, it's got the names there, but that's a little misleading. That's 1991, that's just districts, and it's where the correct people are.
Correct, yeah, that is a very good point.
But that's why the maybe, is that...
I believe so. That is in there to recognize the fact that, that it's difficult, but not impossible, to be precisely, but they did not want to set numeric targets, because, as county council just mentioned, there may be some good reasons for not, for, for things being, there being a variety in the numbers.
Okay.
And then I wanted to show you where, where the redistricting led us in 2001, the last effort. Again, not, not all of you were in those district decisions, but last time, the board supervisors did even a little bit better than they did in 1991, and the deviation was only at 0.84%. The other items in the State Election Code, wanted to talk briefly about, were the factors that the board, and in this case, they use the word "may" consider through the process.
Chris, could you just go back one slide?
Sure.
Just one second, I just wanted to, I wanted to see this. Got it, thank you.
You know, that you have it there, I just find it fascinating when you see the growth. You look at District 1 and District 5 are almost identical, and then what 10 years will do?
The, the factors that the board may consider that are identified in the Elections Code, I think are fairly straightforward, topography, geography, and then these issues of cohesiveness, continuity, compactness, you know, and community of interest, those are certainly more subjective, and those are getting at the issue of not dividing communities, if possible, respecting boundaries, neighborhoods, communities to the extent possible.
Chris, when you, when you say communities, are you talking about cities themselves?
It can be, but not necessarily. We have, for example, the city of Oxnard today has a population well in excess of what would be a district size to allow us to be balanced, and so we have no choice but to in some manner divide the city of Oxnard. The question is how you do that.
Within communities within Oxnard, those kinds of...
Correct. Maybe a more obvious example might be the community of Piru, as an example. That's a small community, relatively remote. You wouldn't split that community in half, you know, it simply wouldn't make sense. That is a community of interest that can be respected, that's, and it just depends. We have unincorporated communities, but, or cities, we do the best we can to maintain them.
But, but Chris, in Oxnard, for example, could be neighborhoods that are community of interest?
They may be, that's correct.
Not necessarily the city, but the neighborhoods.
Correct. Okay, thank you. The Federal Voting Rights Act is a little more complicated, I will say. The, the purpose of the, of the state code that I was just talking about are really some guidance for the board on how things to consider and their factors. The Federal Voting Rights Act is really geared in the sections that are relevant here into ensuring that we have representation and that minority groups are respected to the greatest extent possible. I think it flows from some things in our history that not necessarily here in Ventura County, where, where actions were taken when you created voting districts to specifically go the other direction, which is to minimize the voting impacts of minorities, and so our guides here, as you can see, are more subjective as well, and in some ways, some people might suggest that they are somewhat opposed from one another, but our guidance here is that absent any other public interest, and that is, I think, a reference to the other criteria that we have to use, that where it's possible to draw a district with a cohesive minority group that comprises a majority, that we should do that. However, we also have the guidance that we shouldn't elevate race above all other criteria. So, as I said, they, they may be viewed as opposed in some sense, but I think, I think that county council will tell you that really a lot of this may be case law, may be the things where we're going to, you know, rely upon guidance in any detail on that issue. The mandated schedule, the Election Code requires that you complete it, as I said earlier, by November 1 of this year. The county has adopted it via ordinance in the past, and we expect that we will do so again, because an ordinance has a 30-day effective period. In essence, the deadline would fall to October 1 as the, the last day for the board to take action, so that the 30 days can run for that to become effective. The other thing to mention in the code is related to the primary for 2012. Well, I may defer to County Counsel on that one.
No, can't be 10%.
No, I think it's a very good question.
It's under the impression, and it was from 2000, that it had to be within 1%?
That's a little thump.
1% comes from a California Supreme Court case dealing with statewide districting. And basically, as nearly as can be is the test, and if you had a very good reason, a new city or something that kicked one out more than that, it might be upheld. But I've not seen any cases recently upheld that are more than 1% in California for counties or statewide, because with modern technology and the number crunching, it's very easy to keep it under 1%. More than 1%, if you had a justification, might be upheld, but that's not where the cases are tending.
And I might point out, this is 1991 redistricting. Supervisor Floyd didn't represent, Parks didn't, none of us were, it's got the names there, but that's a little misleading. That's 1991, that's just districts.
Correct, yeah, that is a very good point.
That's why the "maybe," is that?
I believe so. That is in there to recognize the fact that it's difficult, but not impossible, to be precisely, but they did not want to set numeric targets, because, as County Counsel just mentioned, there may be some good reasons for not, for things being, there being a variety in the numbers.
Okay.
And then I wanted to show you where the redistricting led us in 2001, the last effort. Again, not all of you were in those district decisions, but last time, the Board Supervisors did even a little bit better than they did in 1991, and the deviation was only at 0.84%. The other items in the State Election Code I wanted to talk briefly about were the factors that the Board, and in this case, they use the word "may," consider through the process.
Chris, could you just go back one slide for just one second? I just wanted to, I wanted to see this. Got it, thank you.
You know, that you have it there, I just find it fascinating when you see the growth. You look at District 1 and District 5 are almost identical, and then what 10 years will do.
The factors that the Board may consider that are identified in the Elections Code, I think, are fairly straightforward: topography, geography, and then these issues of cohesiveness, continuity, compactness, you know, and community of interest, those are certainly more subjective, and those are getting at the issue of not dividing communities, if possible, respecting boundaries, neighborhoods, communities to the extent possible.
Chris, when you say "communities," are you talking about cities themselves?
It can be, but not necessarily. We have, for example, the city of Oxnard today has a population well in excess of what would be a district size to allow us to be balanced, and so we have no choice but to in some manner divide the city of Oxnard. The question is how you do that.
Within communities within Oxnard, those kinds of...
Correct. Maybe a more obvious example might be the community of Piru, as an example. That's a small community, relatively remote. You wouldn't split that community in half, you know, it simply wouldn't make sense. That is a community of interest that can be respected. That's, and it just depends, we have unincorporated communities, but for cities, we do the best we can to maintain them.
But, Chris, in Oxnard, for example, could be neighborhoods that are community of interest?
They may be, that's correct.
Not necessarily the city, but the neighborhoods.
Correct. The Federal Voting Rights Act is a little more complicated, I will say. The purpose of the State Code that I was just talking about are really some guidance for the Board on how things to consider and their factors. The Federal Voting Rights Act is really geared, in the sections that are relevant here, into ensuring that we have representation and that minority groups are respected to the greatest extent possible. I think it flows from some things in our history that not necessarily here in Ventura County, where actions were taken when you created voting districts to specifically go the other direction, which is to minimize the voting impacts of minorities. And so our guides here, as you can see, are more subjective as well, and in some ways, some people might suggest that they are somewhat opposed from one another, but our guidance here is that, absent any other public interest, and that is, I think, a reference to the other criteria that we have to use, that where it's possible to draw a district with a cohesive minority group that comprises a majority, that we should do that. However, we also have the guidance that we shouldn't elevate race above all other criteria. So, as I said, they may be viewed as opposed in some sense, but I think that County Counsel will tell you that really, a lot of this may be case law, maybe the things where we're going to, you know, rely upon guidance in any detail on that issue. The mandated schedule, the Election Code requires that you complete it, as I said earlier, by November 1st of this year. The county has adopted it via ordinance in the past, and we expect that we will do so again, because an ordinance has a 30-day effective period. In essence, the deadline would fall to October 1st as the last day for the Board to take action, so that the 30 days can run for that to become effective. The other thing to mention in the code is related to the primary for 2012, and in order for the districts to be used for that primary, there are deadlines that set you back to make sure that the new districts are fully considered within those primaries. For now, the primary is scheduled in California for June of 2012. If it remains on that date, these deadlines that are before you are the ones that are still relevant. There's still talk in Sacramento, whether or not it comes to pass or not is anyone's guess, but that they may want to move that primary up to March. If they do that, the Board action would actually have to take place August 2nd in order for the new districts to be used for a March primary. So it gets a little tricky, and I guess what I would point out is that if the Board wishes to ensure that actions in Sacramento will have no effect on the districts, their boundaries and their use in the primaries, that August 2nd should probably be considered as your deadline for taking action, and that way you don't have to worry about what might happen up in Sacramento. Okay, recommended process, this is the same process that was used in 2001, and recommended that the development of alternatives, refinement of those alternatives over a series of public meetings, finally, selection of that preferred alternative, and then staff would return with, that in ordinance form for a first and a second reading of that. The criteria that we're recommending, again, are the same ones that were used in 2001, and these are something of a, kind of a restatement or compilation of criteria that we just talked about in both the state and federal acts. The first one is related to the census population. We're required to use census population. That is considered, I think, the most accurate and most reliable data available to us, and the lowest level at which that is available to us is at the, what they call the census block level. So we're recommending that that be done. We use block-level data as our base information, that we consider the voting strength of minorities in the development of the district boundaries. And then the remainder of the criteria are, all are done to the extent possible. And these are the geographic, topographic, community of interest boundaries, that to the extent possible, we respect those. And again, this cohesiveness, continuity, compactness, jurisdictional boundaries, political boundaries, and that, to the extent possible, that current districts and unincorporated populations would then be left intact to the degree possible. And I think that in essence is, we are going to not try, we're going to try not to radically alter districts, you know, unnecessarily. And just to give you an idea of a census block, what that means, this is actually a kind of close-up in the center of the city of Oxnard. The, let's see if I can use this. This right here is Oxnard Boulevard, just to kind of orient you a little bit. And this just gives you an idea, when you're in an urban area, a census block is actually quite small and about what most people would think of as a block, and so we get down to a pretty low level of data there. The next one is giving you, now that's the Tierra Rata Valley. Now you have a much more rural area, and so your census blocks obviously are quite a bit larger. And so if we're going to respect census block boundaries, I just wanted to give you an idea of where lines will be and why lines might be where they are in rural areas as opposed to urban areas and what our options are. The public participation and outreach is an important element of the program, and that is something that's required in the Elections Code, that we do so. The recommendation is that we have multiple meetings and hearings at the Board, and that we make available a redistricting website for the county that will, as a means to both provide information and receive comments from the public. And we've worked up a website, and depending on the Board's action today, we'll be ready to go live with such a website. And we can, when I'm finished, if the Board wishes to do a quick little demo of what we have, if you'd like to see that. But we feel it's a real valuable tool for us to get information out and receive comments from the public. This is just a static picture of the front page of that website, and as I said, we can go through a demo later if you'd like. The, you know, the possible schedule here would be, if the Board took in action today, we could begin the process today. We would then be able to return, we believe, by your final meeting in April with alternatives, and then take whatever time is necessary to refine, you know, those and select one, and then be ready for first reading of an ordinance by the end of June, and second reading by July 12th. As I mentioned, if we, the somewhat soft deadline for us is August 2nd, so this doesn't give a whole lot of time, but it does give us a few weeks on the back end, if necessary, for us to do any work and still meet that August 2nd deadline to free us from any worries about what might happen in Sacramento. This is just to give the Board an idea of kind of the task at hand. You saw those tables earlier that shows you where the Board ended up after the 1991 and 2001 redistricting efforts. This is showing you where we stand today. These are the populations based on the 2010 census for our existing districts, and you can see that our deviation is 2.88, well above the deviations that we, the Board was able to reach in the last two efforts. And then, something, it might give you kind of a, let's see if we can get this to work. There it is. This, give you an idea, this is where the Board was before the redistricting effort in 2001. That earlier table showed you, they were able to bring their deviation down to 0.84. Before they started that, the deviation was at 2.55. So what is before the Board today in terms of an imbalance is roughly equivalent to where you were in 2001, before they took the effort. So just to give you kind of that little bit of encouragement. And the last thing I wanted to touch on, as we mentioned, the issue of minority and voting rights and representation, and in Ventura County, that's primarily our Hispanic-Latino population. Those of you that were involved last time in the process, this will probably look familiar. This was the base table that was used to evaluate alternatives, and you can see the population numbers, the total population county share numbers are those that you've seen in the previous tables for where things stand today, and then you can go across and get kind of an appreciation of the voting population and our Hispanic-Latino population, and what those percentages are, both in our current districts on the far-right column, that is our Hispanic-Latino voting population shares within each of the districts. So I wanted to kind of highlight that for the Board. And then, and lastly, we'll leave here with a map showing you the existing boundaries, and then a little table in the corner there, kind of where we stand today with our current population. With that, I think that completes the PowerPoint, and as I said, I have to answer questions, or if you wanted a quick demonstration of the website, you have to do that as well.
I think we do have a couple of questions. Supervisor Floyd?
Chris, when you talked about community involvement, going back to your website, I don't think you were involved in the 2001.
No.
But maybe you have some knowledge of this, besides, you know, the political stuff of involvement. Was most of the citizenry at all interested or getting involved at all, do you know?
As I understand it, and actually, County Counsel was deeply involved in that, maybe he can answer better than I, but there was involvement particularly with some groups as Supervisor Long and Supervisor Bennett were here as well. Maybe I'll let them answer that question.
I'll take a step. I mean, the Board didn't create a committee or anything like that, but a group of people did come together and make a recommendation. It was a recommendation that I think their primary focus seemed to be that Port Juaniemi was hooked up with Thousand Oaks, and they felt like that was, they didn't feel like that was an appropriate connection, and that was something that the Board was looking at doing anyway, so there was sort of like a convergence. There wasn't, so there wasn't like a lot of contention or anything else, people offered that as a suggestion.
That was more of a community thing, where the communities didn't kind of...
Yeah, community of interest kind of thing. And that's the only, that's the only involvement that I recall, Supervisor Long.
It was just, it was a group of folks and also using technology, but working closely with Tom Burg and giving their input, and it was looking at that communities of interest piece.
Okay, good. Sounds like it was a good process.
It was good.
You know, what I saw from looking at the trends, you know, there is some areas in the county that are growing a lot faster than other areas. And we know even today that these numbers are going to change a lot, because there have been development projects approved, and there's going to be some more spikes in growth in certain areas. Is that anything that we would consider, or that's just to be handled in 10 years from now?
I think the, generally, it would be handled 10 years from now, but I think some knowledge of those can certainly be considered as you're looking at boundaries, but ultimately, when you're done, the test of those boundaries will be the 2010 census population. That would be the bottom-line test. So you wouldn't want to kind of get out of balance in anticipation of growth. I don't think that that would be necessarily an acceptable approach, but I don't know if Counsel has a different opinion.
No, that's basically correct. Some court cases have dealt with redistricting where they tried to base it on trends and got away from equal population. You can't do that, but if you were within 1% and had the 6,000 on the low end be the one you expected the most growth in, that would be fine. You could also redistrict at any time, and I believe the Board, the county did it in '85. You don't have to wait for the 10 years. So if you had a recognized person population, which happens elsewhere when a new city's created, for example, you could do it at that time, but you have to stay under that 1% to be safe from attack.
Thank you. Any other questions from the Board? I don't have any public comment cards. Do you know of any clerk?
Nope.
Okay, then I think at this point, we can go into some Board discussion comments.
We wanted to know if you wanted to see that, pity that website.
Right. Well, I think the website will help us in terms of adjusting maps as we discuss more details on what the district should entail, so maybe we'll look at that when we need to, is my thought.
Well, unless somebody wants to see it.
Unless you guys want to see it.
Do you want to watch?
Say that again?
He was, he just asked it. There was an opportunity to take a quick view of his website that they had put up, if you wanted to see it, that's all.
Take a quick, take a quick look.
Be happy to do that. Just take a minute.
Sure.
Yeah, it's not terribly complicated.
Well, while you're putting that up, you say it's going to allow for the public to make comments, so there will be a monitoring of it, and there will be replies sent back to the public?
Yeah, absolutely. And this, it's really, as I said, quite simple. I'll just take a moment here. This is our homepage, providing some basic information for the public, and then we would, and this is, this is, will all change, depending on the Board's action. So if you read any of the fine print and it doesn't reflect it, this will all be updated before it's posted. This is not available to the public.
You're trying to give them the same kind of information you just gave us?
Exactly, yeah. And whatever action the Board takes, they would be put up on this page. This is kind of a process that talks about the, you know, based on the recommendation before today. Schedule, kind of again, gives the highlights of where things are. A map showing the current districts for folks that aren't familiar, and because in the port area that was just mentioned, we have a convergence of a lot of districts. We put in a little magnifying glass, just so folks can get a feel for that and a more accurate picture. Let's see, the, talk about, to the extent there are any alternatives developed or recommendations, they would appear here on that page. Highlight our public hearing schedule as we know it. Of course, that's subject to change as things go through. And then we have a comment page, and what we've done is provided them a place to view that the, this arrangement is done in large part because it feeds right into a database and organizes all of the information for us, and one of the important reasons we're doing that, as opposed to just simply, let's say, an email, is that we don't know how many comments we're going to get. And this way, if we get 500 comments or 1,000 comments, it'll go right into a table and database for us, make it much easier for us to evaluate, review them and consider them. So I set up to go through, and that's going to look familiar to anyone who's kind of used the web. And then we have a frequently asked questions section, which addresses, you know, any number of issues that we, you know, that the questions folks might have about the process in general. And then we'll have a spot for any latest news, and then we have links to the California Database Census Bureau and any others that we come across that we think might be helpful to folks who are interested in the process, so that's it.
What's the name of that website, is that what it says right there?
Oh, oh, this, oh, the address we would give would be ventura.org/redistricting.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be reached through, we'd have a button on the county webpage and what have you.
Yes, Supervisor Serres.
Chris, in your report, you say that we have to have at least two hearings, minimum, and that one is to receive the public comments and alternatives. Is that according to your report?
Yes, yeah.
And then the last one is to adopt or reject, you know, the plan.
Right. And in our case, because we're doing it by ordinance, we'll actually have to have three, because we have to have a first reading and a second reading, which are both public hearings, and then we would have the one for the code for the initial review of maps, alternatives.
So is this considered the first hearing?
No, no, there's no, no.
This is just the plan?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Would you go to the homepage? I just think somewhere, whether it's this page, I think it'd be good to have a link for the district supervisors, so if constituents looking at District 3 and wants to send me a message rather than go back to the county's homepage, they could just link right to the district.
Very good idea.
Send comment.
Very good. That's easy enough for us to do.
And the other thing for the Board's discussion, I think we ought to think about at least one evening meeting here in the boardroom to make it convenient for folks.
That's the question I was going to bring up right here. We're scheduled to meet on the, I mean, your schedule calls for the 26th. We have, we have an afternoon meeting on the 26th, so we would be here, and it's going to be a meeting that's going to go a long time. It's going to be the initial study guideline meeting. So it seems like we're going to be here late anyway, that we ought to combine it, instead of having the meeting being during the day on the 26th, it'd be the evening of the 26th, right? And, yeah, but I mean, we just have to take a break for dinner, and we'd have to identify what time we're going to start that meeting, but by the time we finish, because we're going to start the ISAG at 12:30, not 1:30, so we're starting out a little bit earlier. We could take a break for dinner, then come back, and I don't know what the appropriate time is, but 7 o'clock, 6:30?
That sounds, that sounds good. I think might as well use it.
And then, and then, right.
Would it be 6:00 that evening, or?
Yeah, we're trying to make it convenient for people, we want to make sure they can get, they can get here, so.
Why don't we just agree to do it that way, and then talk about what time we're going to have start and stop, because I don't have a read yet from our planning staff on how long they think that ISAG might take this time.
Well...
Did the advanced calendar say, Roberta?
I think that two and a half hours.
So double. Starting at 12:30.
Yeah, in reality, last time it was probably four hours.
No, they've done some work, just progress.
Right, so. Right, okay. But I think pretty quickly we ought to identify the time, because we're pretty close to the, close to the 26th, right?
Good to get that information out.
At least people who are off work, they can. 6:30? All right, 6:30, that gives people a little bit of time to grab something from work and be able to get here. Right. And with that, I would offer that, I think we had more work to do 10 years ago, because we had this community of interest issue out there. I think we're much closer at this point in time. We don't have any big changes. What I would propose is that I... point in time. We don't have any big changes. What I would propose is that, I have a, I have a suggestion, and that we have that alternative be the alternative that we put out there to the public and let them react to that. And then if we have to come up with alternatives after that. But I think it would indicate sort of our belief that we generally have districts that are pretty good districts, that major changes are not needed, and we just take a look at that. So that'd be my suggestion in terms of that. I'm happy to go over that with, I wish, I wish, I wish I had it ready, right, you know what I mean? But I don't have a PowerPoint, but I think it's, the changes are simple enough that I can say them and I think, I think everybody would get them.
Could probably use maybe Chris's.
Chris's map there? Well, let me, let me give you the basic, the basic concepts, yeah, sure.
Can we expand that?
I don't even think we'll need that, you know what I mean? I think it's pretty, I think it's pretty clear. And what I would propose, and I'll give the specifics in a minute, but let me just give you the big, the big concept, is that, you know, starting out at the East End, Supervisor Foyes' district would just stay right where it is. So he's pretty close to the, pretty close to the number. Don't make a change in Supervisor Foyes' district. Supervisor Parks is...
What's the number?
164.7, about 164.7, I think is, is the, you know, that would be the perfect, you know what I mean? And he's at 166. He's certainly way within, you know, we were over 6,500 separating us last time, right? And this proposal would get us, you know, about 6,500, 6,700, you know, everybody very close to where we were.
Supervisor Bennett.
Supervisor Zaragoza has, 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 just, has the largest population and we have to, have to knock some out. What I would propose is that District 1, and this would be my district, would, I'm already into Oxnard some, that I would move into Oxnard at the River Park area. So that'd be to the north of the freeway. So I'd have to the north of the freeway and I'd have South Bank to the right of the freeway right there.
And it'd be contiguous to a something.
Yeah, right. So it'd be contiguous. That Supervisor Long, she's at the south end of Oxnard, and that she'd pop up and the precinct number is precinct 508. But that gives her, that adds about 6,000 for her to come in. So I get the two precincts in River Park. I have the numbers. I'd give them out. And then Supervisor Parks, who has the most that she has to catch up, you know, to get there, that Supervisor Parks has all of Malibu, so all those beachfront homes. So if we would have Supervisor Parks come along the coast and pick up Silver Strand, but not, try not to mess up the community of interest of Port Huinimi, because that's a community of interest. But, but there is a consistent community of interest of people at those beachfront homes, et cetera. Pick up Silver Strand, pick up Hollywood Beach, pick up the Harbor Peninsula, Mandalay Bay, and Oxnard Shores, or at least some part of Oxnard Shores, right, that...
Is there enough people in there?
And that, oh, that would take Supervisor, that would take Supervisor Parks up to 165.
That's about 6,000.
165, 165 and some change. So...
Okay, could you repeat it one more time?
Yeah. So it would be, if you want me to, if you want me to give you the specifics, right?
You can highlight it.
Let me go back to the, sorry to do this to you guys, but let's go back to the website to that magnifying glass and we'll...
Okay, good. And I have it written down here too, right?
Don't ask who lives in that area, Linda.
Oh, you can't do that.
All right. There we go.
Okay, so...
Going up into this area, that what you were describing.
See, Steve would take River Park.
So down at the bottom, yeah, I mean, we don't have to do, I think it's Parks is the one.
Yeah, Parks is the problem.
So if you made a connection, Parks is coming up the coast, so you'd have to make a connection. And we'd be, we'd just direct staff to use their judgment and come up with an appropriate legal connection from where Parks' current district is, you know? And that may include the two districts that are outside of Port Huinimi, very small.
And I would just ask, not to interrupt, but I am, I know at one point, well, at the last redistricting, Port Huinimi was in District 2. There was no connection, I don't think.
Yes, there was.
Was there?
Yeah, there was.
So that's the same kind of thought. You're thinking of just...
But connecting, yeah, but this time they connected directly into Huinimi. This would not do that because that would give you too many if you picked up Huinimi. You'd go way over. And instead, you'd just stay narrow right along the coast there, following that. Stay, stay close to the coast, please, right? There you go, so along the coast, all right? All right, now jump over. Now, that's where you'd pick up from District 5. You'd pick up that precinct from District 5, then jump across to Hollywood Beach.
And that's Silver Strand.
What's that?
Silver Strand.
Silver Strand. You'd pick up that district. And then, and the peninsula that sticks in, right?
Hollywood Beach.
It's Hollywood Beach, and then that peninsula that sticks in in the harbor, then go, go across to Mandalay Bay to the right, Chris.
So I'm sorry, Supervisor Bennett, so Hollywood Beach and then Usain, also the...
The peninsula.
The peninsula within the harbor.
Right. And Mandalay Bay, right? That's Mandalay Bay right there.
Yes.
And then if you go up, because what we're trying to do is keep you as the coastal supervisor, you'd go up Oxnard Shores. And Oxnard Shores ends up there a little bit. Makes you, you know, the only issue I have is Oxnard Shores is a little bit larger, but we'd be still within that. We'd be 6,700, I think. We'd still be well within the 1%.
And these are like communities of interest.
And they are. I think there is a very strong community of interest here for...
Probably a big community versus the inside the city community is probably...
That's right, that's right.
But then I would retain the military, half of the military base.
You'd still have half of the military base. That's right. Because she would only be picking up the, we're trying to get her, the beachfront stuff, not so much, not so much the inland stuff, right, okay? So you'd still have half of the base.
Well, maybe once I look at the census tracts, you wouldn't have to go that far into Oxnard Shores. I don't know what the numbers are.
Well, you could. There's a logical place to break it, which would be at Woolley, right, which would break it between herself and myself. But if you break it at Woolley, then you break the community of interest stuff, because it's pretty, it's pretty tight, Oxnard Shores. So, you know, the question is community of interest versus, I think if we're within 1%, I think community of interest probably. If we were outside of 1%, I think maybe I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider community of interest. But if we're within 1%, then I think that community of interest is probably the more dominant.
And the state park could be that, too.
Yeah, but again, you break up the community of interest, right, you know, in terms of that. So, so anyway, so you see that. I mean, I think the others are pretty clear. River Park, two precincts in River Park. In fact, as I have it written down here for your viewing pleasure, so why don't I pass that along there and read it in?
I would just say it's because we have been successful at slow growth and it's one of our emphases in District 2, that I need to make up the most.
Yeah, and then it would also start you a little larger and you would, you would catch up. And quite frankly, River Park is going to grow. What I'm picking up is going to grow. So I'd be starting a little smaller, but River Park would grow.
And that's exactly, that's logical for that.
And, you know, if we're within 1%, it's not a bad thing. Could you hand one of these to Chris Stevens, please, you guys? Where do they end up?
There we go.
Yes. Just, just like in school.
This is how the districts are formed. They're based on precincts. So you've broken it into what precincts would be.
Actually, they're based on census tracts, as Chris said, but the census tracts are pretty much following the precincts. So this, this gives them really clear direction.
Okay.
So, you know, quite frankly, you know, this puts you a little large, but you grow a little bit less. I'm going to grow more with River Park, right?
You're moving off the beach a little bit, what you're saying?
Yeah, so that we have one person with the beach. I'd be picking up River Park.
Picking up River Park, okay.
Okay, so...
Was it previously both Supervisor Bennett and Zaragoza had this section that you're suggesting?
Oxnard Shores. Well, I mean, part of this...
Was it split between two supervisors?
No, I got, I have Hollywood and Silver Strand.
He just, he had Hollywood and Silver Strand. I had the Oxnard Shores area up there.
Okay, thank you.
Right, okay. So, yeah, it wasn't split before.
But I mean, two supervisors handled this section that you're suggesting?
That's right, be consolidated. I think that's probably, probably helpful from that standpoint. So the third district takes from the fifth district, and that's precinct 508, right? That's about 6,000. Takes Supervisor Long up...
About 6,100.
About 66, right? And then the first district takes precinct 559 and 561. I hope I've got those right. I'm pretty sure I did.
559 and 561, yes.
Yeah, 559 and 561 of River Park from District 5. And then the second district picks up, from the fifth district, picks up Silver Strand 501, Hollywood Precinct 501, and Oxnard Precinct 565. That's those three there. And then the second district takes from the first district, Oxnard Precinct 106 and Oxnard Precinct 104. And my calculations are that that takes us to about 6,700 difference. We started 10 years ago at 6,400 difference. Given the fact that we've grown, we should be at the same percentage or maybe a little bit less in terms of a variation. So we're within 1%. And rather than having a bunch of different scenarios and everybody going, if this is, if this is, if this, if this, I think this reflects that generally, we got districts that make sense for community of interest. This links this community of interest here well. I think it's, I think it's, I think it ought to be what we have people react to.
And it does make sense that Supervisor, Supervisory District 5 is the largest, so you've got three different districts taking from 5.
That's right.
That's right. And this way, we...
And don't do it again.
Yeah.
John, you're going to be able to walk this district without a car in pretty soon where he's gone.
I think we're going to grow a little bit more.
To me, I think you came up with a pretty good plan that really doesn't change the district too much. It stretches them a little bit in a couple of places. I think that's good, that's good.
I think geographically, looking at it, it's just as strange as my, my district already looks because I go way up into Las Padres. Doesn't anyone want...
Fraser Park.
It's going to make the supervisor's district look linear, but it does make sense. It does make sense.
But it is, it is logical.
For the beach, the whole beach community issues that are typically important to beach living and...
And these are all high-end beachfront homes here.
Yeah. I don't know that we have low-end beachfront homes.
Well, we used to at Ventura, we used to, but even those are gone nowadays. The bungalow is gone.
Yeah, right. I guess Supervisor Parks is the one got the most change here, so...
I need to go visit. I need to go out and take a look.
Well, I...
But have this as this...
But if we can give direction to staff as this is the first, first look.
And let me, let me offer you one other thing. I read in the staff report that they're budgeting $100,000 to do this. We don't need to spend $100,000 on this redistricting. I mean, I think, you know, this, you know, with the technology that's out there, if I could get this close with the numbers, you know, just like this, I would hope that we wouldn't spend $100,000. I would hope that we would do this and go.
And, you know, I like to share a couple of items. You know, I think that Supervisor has a good plan because I don't want to lose anything in the fifth district, you know, because I've enjoyed, you know, serving the individuals in the fifth district. But I know that's a criteria that we, that we have to follow that. And so I think that by doing this, we have the community of interest and we can equalize those neighborhoods. And I think it'll, it'll follow the law too, which I think is extremely important. And we're following, you know, exactly what you said, you know, the topography, geography, you know, the continuity and so forth, Chris. And I think that's important that, you know, that we do that. And by doing this proposal or looking at this proposal as the alternative, I think it'll work. So I, I think it's a good plan.
And I have worked with many of the communities out there already with our harbor issues particularly. And so I know a lot of the folks out there. And I know I was, I referred to, you know, with, you know, handling more parts of other areas, but the word really isn't handle, it's serve. And that is, to me, it's just another opportunity to, you know, look at helping another area. And we all get comfortable in our own districts. So this is, it's new, but I am willing.
Okay, okay.
Chris, is it, I love the idea of trying to save that money. We get, we have a lot of places we can use to just spin on our wheels. Does it take you much to kind of come up with this map that he just did?
I think we should be able to come up with that map well in advance of the 26th and have it available with our materials. I don't, I don't see, with just one alternative, well, I guess one proposed plan, we won't even call it an alternative. Yeah, I think that could be done.
Does that come to us? Can we get that early? Do we have to wait till the, to the meeting?
We'll, I don't know. I think we can make it available...
I know, for me, it doesn't, I'm just talking...
It would, yeah, we would make it...
Park, she has the opportunity.
I think we'd make it available to, on the web, to the Board as soon as we have it available, yeah.
I think with the Board's concurrence on this, to at least post this for public review and comment. But are we required to have more than one proposal?
No. No, no, we're not. And we can have one proposal and then work from that. And start with that.
And that's going to be posted...
It can be posted as soon as, you know, and I suggest that April 26 will be a public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
So it will be posted and noticed and well in advance, I assume.
That's why I was asking about how many hearings do we have to have, so.
Well, thank you Supervisor Bennett for saving us so much money. And I, it would be good to get it to the Board, let us have an understanding what the numbers would be with the recommendations that he has, so we get a good feel for it.
And if I could, I mean, I'll tell you, I'm almost certain. The number's going to be, you're going to be the largest, but not, you're going to be where you are right now. So you're going to be 166 something and, and I'll be down there at 160 and a half or something, you know, roughly. So that'll be the spread, you know, between us.
Still make that one point. It still looks like it's over 91 to 2,000. It's pretty consistent.
Exactly. So it's just going to, it's going to get us back, take us from 2.23 back to about 8.0, you know, about 0.85. So I'll tell you that in bits. The other thing is, I'd like us to not adopt the scheduling here except for the 26th. Let's get to the 26th, see where we are.
And hopefully we're...
Things in good shape. We may adopt much quicker. If things aren't, we go back to...
Part of my goal is if we could get this done early, you've got three people up for election. It'd be nice if they knew their districts. Nice if all that was done. If we can get it done even faster, it'd be good.
Right. So, so I'd propose we just get to the 26th and then we talk about what, what the schedule would be that night. And we give staff direction about what we want for this.
Because we don't have to post anything right now.
No, not at all. In fact, our schedule had a very broad May and June because we knew it was subject to change in direction from the Board.
And the, yeah, and if we post a schedule, it'll create an expectation. And we should just say the 26th.
That's the only one we can do.
Respond to us before the 26th or it's 26th if you're, if you're interested.
Good, yeah. And then that gives us a couple of weeks to get that up before even earlier.
Do you want to press a motion?
Other supervisor, talk.
So I'll make the motion that the...
Can you look at what we have before us as the recommendation? It's a four-point recommendation.
Right. And what, I probably should read it into the record, Roberta? Should I read this into the record, probably? All right. So my motion would be for staff to come back for a public hearing April 26th at 6:30. And as soon as they have maps available and that they're confident in them, that they're accurate and all of that, that they make them available to public on the web and obviously make them available to the supervisors and anybody that's interested. And that the map be, that we start with one proposed redistricting plan. And that is that the third, with these modifications, from our current districts, the modifications, our third district takes from fifth district, South Oxnard Precinct 508. First district takes from fifth district, the River Park Neighborhood Precincts 559 and 561. Second district takes from the fifth district, Silver Strand Precincts 501, Hollywood Precinct 501, and Oxnard Precinct 565. I want to make sure I'm reading that one right.
You.
501. You certainly know what we're talking about, Chris. It says 501. And then the second district takes from first district, Oxnard Precinct 106 and Oxnard Precinct 104. And that's my motion.
Do we have a second on this motion that's on the floor?
One second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Bennett, a second from Supervisor Long. Could we all please vote?
You had two hours on here, but we're so efficient, I look at it, less than an hour.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
And that is approved unanimously. Thank you.
Can I get one, one point of clarification? Does that mean the Board's not adopting the criteria and do not want us to do an evaluation of the alternative against those criteria? Or not? Or just simply the map and the totals?
We're not hiding anything, yeah. We adopt the new criteria and do the evaluation.
I think we want to do that.
Okay, I wanted to make sure.
I'm confident they're going to be fine for the new criteria.
Are all the recommended actions in addition to that?
Okay, I guess.
Oh, no, not all. Just one public meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Board comments.
Okay.
All right, we have one more item left on our agenda, as I recall, and that is board comments, and I was going to start on the left side of the board, with Mr. Mylott, with Supervisor Coy.
Good, well, thank you, I'd just like to adjourn the memory of people on this list, and also, as we heard earlier, the woman who was named Woman of the Year herself, and also Janice Parven, the mayor of Moore Park, was also named Assemblyman of District Woman of the Year, she was nominated by Jeff Correll, and chosen for involvement in city leadership and all the things that she's done over the years, and then, I think that's it, we'll make it quick.
Thank you, and Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you, I have a list to adjourn in memory, I need to call out a couple of them, Port Rennemi Joan Chase, air stewardess with California Central, flew many trips between Vietnam and the States caring for wounded U.S. military, Santa Paula, Hermina Jimenez, Limoneira worker for many, many, many years, and an aunt to one of my employees, and she'll be missed, and Dolores Teresa Hertenstein Villano, volunteer, tireless volunteer for Camero Heights, Montevista Camero High School, won the Camero Heights PCA Honore Life Award, and Evelyn Nyland of Camero, member Padre Sierra Senior Club, Camero Beautiful, Camero Ambassador, Sierra Club, Camero Women's Club, Dabug member of the Republican Women. So, submit that list, as the board knows, the state just completely imploded, and we don't have anything to be for us, as far as a constitutional amendment or a ballot measure in June, something that I note even Dan Walters supported, which is from the Sacramento Bee, which is saying something, I guess, that there at least should have been a right for the voters to vote, but that's not before us now, and I had talked with our CEO in preparation for our upcoming budget discussions, and, and as we'll have presentations to us, that we should have, take a look at what an all-cuts budget might mean to this county, because that might be what we're looking at, and I wanted to also report out on two, two things, I'm sorry, I've got a few things here, but top S, Ventura County Organizing for Empowerment Women's Forum, I mentioned this earlier, I think it was Saturday out at CSUCI, it was sponsored by many of our wonderful women's groups in this county, the Commission for Women, the AAUW, the Community Action of Ventura County, and it really was a wonderful conference, they focused on, as, as the slogan says, empowering women, and they had a wonderful documentary of the garment workers' struggle in downtown L.A. to organize, and the battles they had in the early 2000s, it was over 150 women, it was well-attended, and I was happy I was able to be there, and then Supervisors Zaragosa and I both took the long trip to Washington, D.C. last week on behalf of the Regional Defense Partnership for the 21st Century, and bottom line on it is, no money, no new missions, no earmarks, but they love us, and you go back there to kind of make sure they know we're here, how much, how important our base is to us, we focused on things, we took white papers back there on, on the military test range, and protecting it with the shipping vessel interface issues, and encroachment issues, we talked about the E2 Reserve Squadron, the Range Surveillance Aircraft, we talked about potential MilCon support for future opportunities at the base, for engine test facilities, and aircrew training facilities, and surface target lab facilities, and also maritime-directed energy, which was in the President's, is in, is in the President's budget, as I said, sea range encroachment, and we also held some meetings discussing the C-130J and firefighting the Forest Service acquisition, and, and issues related to our need to have some definitive policy and direction on that, when we're, when we're in wildland fires, we haven't had in a couple years, it's kind of lowered the attention on the need that arises when we have significant fires, and, and who's, who's available to respond to us, and where there might be a synergy between our base and those firefighting interface opportunities, so, it was a quick, quick turnaround visit, it was very cold, but the cherry blossoms were beautiful, as were the tulip trees, and then I'd like to, I also attended on Saturday, and I just, I don't know, I tell you about these things I attend, but this one was the first, it was the first annual Dining with the Dogs fundraiser, Ventura County Sheriff's Search and Rescue, and it was at the Camero Ranch House, and over 400 people attended, and it's different from Wilma's Search and Rescue, the, what, the name of that, the, anyway, the, the National, National Search Dog, this is our own, this is our, this is a search and rescue dogs for police service agencies, Santa Barbara was there, Santa, Santa Monica, or certainly our Ventura County sheriffs, many, many, and they raised money for the search and rescue K-9 units, and to the National Police Dog Foundation, they had excellent attendance, had it was, it was, I was able to pop in for a minute, and staying on the theme of dogs, there were lots of dogs there, there's a bloodhound, a really cool bloodhound, on the dog theme, all of us know how wonderful work Monica's doing at our Ventura County Animal Shelter, and there is an ASPCA 100,000 K Challenge underway, that you can go online to vote to support our animal shelter, and if we win, they get $100,000, and that would be nice, and you have to vote now to qualify them between April 4th and April 14th, and then you can, and then, they qualify, then they go into a second round of voting, and I don't know if any of you have done this before, but it really is easy, you can only vote once a day, and to vote us, to vote in our animal shelter, vote once a day by going into votetosavelives.org, or go through our animal shelter website, and you can, and it leads you through how to vote, so, everybody listening in the county family, go and vote, 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 vote often, every day, and it'd be great to, to get some monies to support our animal shelter, and just one last thing, I know that Japan is still in the news because of what's going on with the nuclear reactor sites, but I think not as much in the news as the recovery from the tsunami that impacted that community, just so you know, that you can still, through our local Red Cross, support the recovery efforts in Japan, by going into our redcross.org to make donations, give them a plug, remember, there's still a long time for recovery for that nation, so, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragosa?
Yes, I'd like to adjourn and memory of the folks on this list, and I'm not going to reiterate, you know, what Supervisor Long mentioned, and the visits that we had at RDP 21, but only to, to share that we did visit Feinstein's office, and Boxer's office, and also Gallagher's office, and Lois Cabs, and we spent a lot of time at the Pentagon, and, and the bad word is earmarks, do not say earmark, because that is a bad word in, in D.C., and there's no money, and apparently there's a lot of, of grouping or reorganizing of agencies that really don't know what they're doing, or what their purpose is yet, and, and of course, you know, we also went over to Pax River to, to meet with the Admiral there, and, and visited him also, and it was more of an educational type of trip, that we had to kind of share with them that Ventura County, you know, bases is here, and that, and that, of course, are the first line of defense, military defense also, and also to protect our 18,000 jobs and the $1.5 billion payroll, that is extremely important to all of us, so it was a very rewarding trip, it was very, very cold, we left, it was 36 degrees in D.C., and we got to L.A., and it was 80, 85 or so degrees, 50-degree difference, you know, so, but it was, it was a good trip, educational, too.
Thank you, and Supervisor Bennett?
Two things, one, I'd like to thank Supervisors Zaragosa and Supervisor Long for going to Washington, a week there, that's a, you know, just blows your schedule in terms of everything else, so, appreciate the good efforts on, on our behalf, in terms of, of going and doing that, and then with regards to what Supervisor Long talked about in terms of voting for animal reg, I mean, with 8,000 employees here, and all the computers that we have here, we ought to be able to win that, and regardless of what you think about animal reg, if they get that $100,000, that's, it's got to be positive, there's at least a little bit less pressure on your department, right, so, I would suggest, people can vote every day, and it's, you know, as politicians, we have to be careful saying it, but, you know, vote early and vote often really applies this time, vote April 4th, April 5th, April 6th, but it would be wonderful, and, and Monica is doing a really marvelous job there, at the animal shelter, and what a way for all of us to say thank you to her, if we all got in there and started voting every day, I, who could beat a county that's got potentially 8,000 people that, that, you know, that might be interested in, in voting for this and stuff, so I just hope we really do well in this, and that, that department heads and everybody else try to inspire people, it's a very simple thing to do, but $100,000 would be worth a fortune to her, in terms of what she could do, right, and stuff, so, I have a few other things, have a few other things that I'll save for, for, for next week, in, in terms of my comments, thank you very much, and I'd like to ask the board to adjourn the memory of the people on this list.
Yes, I would also encourage people to vote often, at least once a day, www.votetosavelives.org, and get your friends to do it, and your families to do it, and put it on Facebook, and Twitter it, and let's get that $100,000 grant, I think that would be nice.
And could I just add one, and there'll be fewer animals will die in this county if we get that grant.
Absolutely, and I would also like to ask that the board close in honor of the people on this list, I submitted to our clerk, wanted to call out one individual, Robert Barker, who is a longtime member of the Lynn Ranch community, a real, a unique individual, I got to go on a tour with him in his golf cart, where he showed me his vision for things, and I'm, I know that he, it will be sorely missed, also, I wanted to comment on a, speaking of animals, and how you can go to votetosavelives.org, I was at the animal, the Kitty Cottage Groundbreaking, and this was the lady from Thousand Oaks, who has donated funds for this addition to our, our cat house, if you will, that will allow the cats to get out of their cages, and instead of being confined to the cages, people will be able to view them out, out and moving around in this nice little kitty cottage, with, I'm sure it's going to be well outfitted with little kitty trees, and mice that you can go like this with, and all that kind of stuff, fake mice, and then also just reminding people that there is an effort to contribute to food share, this month of April and May is Bring Into Action Food Share, is conducting a food and fund drive at your place of business through the end of May, it's for their brown bag program, which serves low-income seniors throughout Ventura County, and they're looking to see that people bring in those food donations and help to keep that service going, it was recently, the funding for that was cut, so, it now relies on the kindness of others to bring in contributions, so I hope people will do that, I did want to just comment briefly also about how effective I find being able to use this iPad is, I mean, if you think about how much paper is on Supervisor Long's desk right now, it's all in here, too, and each week, we go through, you know, hundreds, if not 1,000 pieces of paper each week, and that's just the Board of Supervisors, you multiply that by the 10 committees and commissions, or 13 that we are on, it's, that, that itself is a benefit, but also hearing what the Sheriff's Department is doing, you know, being able to use it for surveillance and monitoring, and what our staff are being able to do it, and then the Human Services Agency, where they can enter things in the field, and not have to do the additional driving, so it, it has so many different ways of reducing costs, I think, I think it would be nice to have some kind of concept of that, maybe, when we get our, maybe our climate change report back, but just to, to look at how much we are saving as a result of this, because part of our effort, for example, to go to hybrid vehicles where possible, is we were able to look and see what are our cost savings, so I think this is another one of those cost-saving instruments, it would be good to document, and I really do think it's kind of the wave of the future, anyway, and then April is National Poetry Month, and I've brought a book of poems to read, but I'm not going to do it, so, with that, I think we'll go ahead and.
The whole month.
And stand adjourned, okay.